Organization. With our home base in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and we are facilitating the meeting tonight. In support of of the meeting and support of all of you and supportive the commission and supportive New Jersey D P. So thank you for joining tonight. Let me go through just a few kind of preliminaries and ground rules and the agenda. So people kind of know the ballgame for tonight. And then what we'll do is is we'll move to some short presentations and then really want to maximize the time for public comment. So if we could go to the next slide, Liz, I'd be much appreciated. Okay, so almost all of you have suffered through Zoom for the last two years. So this is probably not new, but just a few things to note. We are using the Zoom platform tonight. This is a Zoom meeting. That means that people, if they want to leave their cameras on, you can, you can turn your cameras off if you want. We do ask you to stay on mute. Unless you're speaking only for sound quality, but your photo is really up to you. It's nice to see people if we can. You also can see, you know, the participants who are here, you can see the number. It's a little more accessible than Zoom webinar. That's what we chose the meeting. Tonight, we are, for those folks who prefer to speak in Spanish. Or speak in Portuguese and we're here in Spanish and Portuguese. There's actually, we've got two separate channels as part of the meeting tonight. So if you go to the Zoom control bar typically at the bottom of your screen. And you can see that in the diagram there, the kind of listing right there on the slide. If you click on that, you go to interpretation, you can pick your language. And you will then be sent to, you know, you'll be in the meeting together, but you'll be sent to a room with a translator. Who will be taking my words in English and translating them into Portuguese or Spanish. And when we have time and we'll make time for public comment, if you want to comment. You can raise your hand, just like everybody else. And what happens then is you can comment and you can comment in your language of choice and the translator will then translate it back for the full group in English. So you can speak the language you are most comfortable in. In addition, there is closed captioning, just to let you know. So Liz, I want you to confirm this, but I believe if you want to hit live transcript, you can see, oh, there's a little part of Zoom control bar where you can see. Essentially, the the closed caption in real time, that will be in English. And in and that's correct, right, Liz, via Zoom itself, you can see it in English, the captioning, is that correct?
Correct.
Great. And if you want to see closed captioning in Spanish or Portuguese. We put in chat just a link to that. And that you have to go to, unfortunately, you have to go to a different website because the way the languages work. Where you could see closed captioning in either Spanish or Portuguese through that link, which Cam just put in the chat function. When we get to public comment about 25 minutes. What I'll ask people to do, because we have a lot of people in the meeting, which we're really glad that there's this much interest. In understanding and commenting is that we'll ask you to raise your hand, raise hand is in the reactions function. In the Zoom Zoom control bar at the bottom. You can chat me directly or Cam directly if you can't figure out how to use the raise hand function and we'll get you in the queue. And leave your hand up when we get there. So we can kind of keep track of everybody and we'll take your hand down once you commented. Just so we make sure that we track everybody because we want to make sure that that happens and everybody wants to comment can. The chat function is really just for technical purposes. We want people to be able to hear and listen to those people making verbal comments tonight. So the chat function is strictly for technical stuff. You know, any comment should be made verbally. And of course, we'll talk a little bit about ways to submit written comments as well during the public comment period. Great. And we'll go over this one more time when we when we get to the comment itself. So that's very good. Will, you might have a, Will, if you have a technical question, go ahead and unmute your mic and go ahead and ask William, that's fine to go ahead and do that. And Will, I may have to, I don't know if I have to.
No, no, I do not. I just wanted to be on the record. We would like to speak.
Okay, good. Your first in the queue. Keep her up. Nicely done. Excellent. No problem at all. Okay, the. Let's go to the next slide. So here's the meeting format. Again, everybody is welcome to have a comment in the language of their of their choice. All opinions and comments, regardless of your views are welcome. As I noticed how you would make a comment, we'll go to that. And again, because of the number of people we have tonight, we are limiting it. I know that can be frustrating. But it also makes sure we're fair. So everyone has a chance to comment who wishes to. So we're going to live it limit the comment to three minutes per person. While the little timer in the corner, when we get there, we'll cue you when you're done. Nice to see your face on screen with your commenting, state your name as you start. And then we have a clock, everybody sees it. So we're fair. We'll ask you to kind of finish it at at zero minutes left of your three. And then if we need to, we'll mute you, but we'll try to avoid that if you keep going. And if we get through everybody and everyone's had a single chance to comment and we still have time. We can certainly reach out to other people who can comment again if there's time. And I'm sorry, that's limited. We just want to make sure we're fair to everybody. We ask that as people have a range of views and comments, be respectful. Listen, this is that person's three minutes of uninterrupted time to make their comment. And we ask other people, listen, don't comment. Otherwise, as as they go, written comments can be submitted after the meeting. Greg will explain that in a little bit. And the commission is required to respond in writing to your questions and comments. After tonight. So once we get going and we're doing comment, it will be they D P and the commission will be. And staff will be really in the listening mode. They won't be necessarily answering questions or responding, but they will be listening. But they are required to respond to your comments in writing after tonight. And as part of the public comments, they also receive in writing after tonight. We're recording this this meeting, so it's fully public. We'll be recording on Zoom. That'll be available to people. It's closed captioning, that kind of closed captioned transcript would be available. We're also preparing a slightly shorter meeting summary. So the people want to read a slightly sort of more digestible format, we'll be able to do that too after the meeting as well. And as I noted, folks will be primarily in listening mode. And I'll go through a few of these comment things when we get to the comment period in a little bit too. Okay, next slide. All right, our agenda is. Really, we're gonna, I mean, in a second here, I'm going to turn over to Dave of New Jersey D P. To say a few words on behalf of the regulator and in behalf of D P, the agency. He'll then turn it over to commission staff to actually give a presentation, commission staff and contractors to give a presentation. It's about 20 minutes. A lot of you know this, but we want to make sure we cover the full ground of kind of where they've been, where they're going, what they're proposing. So everybody understands it has kind of this on the same page regarding that. And then really, we go to public comment. At the end, we'll just have a brief time for kind of next steps and remind people how to provide written comment as well. The plan is for the meeting to go tonight until eight thirty. If we still have commoners, we'll address the time times at that point as well. The. There is, I just want to note. Let's see, the. One thing that people are asking me in chat, which I think is a reasonable question, I won't be able to. Police this, so to speak, or enforce this. But I think people are asking if folks are in the neighborhood, most adjacent to the facility could go first. That would be much appreciated. So again, if if in the good spirit and good faith of everyone, if those most directly affected. Again, within a certain perimeter around the facility, the neighborhood's closest facility could go first. That would be much appreciated. Again, I can't promise that I can enforce that, but I think it's a very fair request. So I just want to note that to folks as well. We will also be clear about how to actually provide written comment. We'll put that in chat and in a slide as we go a little further along. So that will definitely happen. Don't worry about that. Okay. Great request, totally fair. We'll try to make that happen and appreciate everybody can kind of in good faith do that as well. We'll do that, do that in partnership. All right, next slide. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Pepe, Director. Office of Permitting and Project Protection for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. To really set the stage on behalf of the agency and by in behalf of the regulators. So Dave, over to you.
Thank you, Pat. I want to thank everyone for attending tonight. It's great to see the. Attendance. That's the idea of. The administrative order. So again, my name is Dave Pepe. I'm the Director of Office of Permitting and Project Navigation and our office oversees all. Environmental justice law and administrative order projects that come into the department. And just real briefly, what the administrative order is. The environmental justice law that was introduced. Not too long ago. It is. Fully forced under pending regulations. Those pending regulations are. In the works, they're not available. So Commissioner Lotteret and his vision. Create the administrative order twenty twenty one dash twenty five, which establishes this process that we're witnessing tonight. Which involves public hearings. And also involves us as as the agency to be listening to the comments from all of you. And to have those comments addressed. And the department will review and evaluate those comments and responses and make sure they comply with the law. And also make sure that. We're we're hearing, right? That that's the whole idea behind this tonight. And I really want to thank everyone for attending. Also, I want to thank Pat for postating this tonight and also P V S C for for hosting us. So just real quick. How this works is after this public hearing. All comments. I have a comment period and after that is received, those comments not only get addressed by the facility, but also all comments are received by. Our office reviewed and all those comments are also evaluated, not just by my office initially, but to the department. So. Our office might get the first look, but we're not the last look. It gets fully evaluated through the programs. And thus, that's how we reached to the point of realizing if if this meets the environmental justice law and the. So I really want to thank everyone and the department is listening. We look forward to your comments. And look forward to hearing from all you. Hand it back off to you.
All right. Good, good, good. So maybe just, I think, maybe I'll go through this and then hand it over to Joe. So and people could not actually write on the screen. That would be most helpful. Appreciate that. Thank you. So again, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for interested parties to share comments and ask questions for P V S C and D P consideration, which they will answer in writing after tonight. As we noted, recorded responses will be prompted. I'm going to put this in chat in just a second as well. But the way you can comment is you can send an email to the email site right there. There's a bitly link right there online. It's. For menus, you can also submit a comment online via that. And you can do the old fashioned way and you can actually mail it via the U S mail. To that address there as well. And then D P will ultimately formally publish the comments and responses. And in just a second here, what I will do is I will put these things in chat. So people have those directly accessible in chat as well. And I think with that, I'll, Joe, I think I'll turn it over, turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Pat. In this part of the presentation, we will provide an overview of the compliance statement that David referred to earlier. That was prepared on behalf of P V S C for the New Jersey D P. The plan is consistent with P V S C's mission and is designed to protect the public health and the environment. This slide lays out the steps P V S C is taking to continue operations even during emergencies. And severe weather and to improve air quality. In summary, P V S C will reduce emissions. With both the standby power generation and daily operations of the wastewater treatment plant. P V S C will only operate the standby power generation facility in emergencies and in preparing for emergencies. And P V S C will utilize renewable solar power and battery storage to provide power for their daily operations. These initiatives will be described in more detail as we go through the presentation. The Passaic Valley Sewage Commission, also referred to as P V S C, was established in nineteen oh two. And Newark Bay wastewater treatment plant began operation in nineteen twenty four. P V S C serves forty eight municipalities in parts of Bergen, Essex, Hudson, Passaic and Union Counties. In addition to that, P V S C receives liquid waste from customers all along the East Coast from Maine to Virginia. P V S C serves over four million residents, five thousand commercial users and two hundred significant industrial users. The Newark Bay wastewater treatment plant is the fifth largest in the United States. And the sink, the site is the single largest power user in the state of New New Jersey. P V S C's wastewater treatment plant is thus the single most important piece of infrastructure in the state of New Jersey when it comes to protecting public health. P V S C's core mission is to protect public health and the environment. P V S C takes great pride in its track record of meeting its discharge permit requirements. Since the devastation wrought by Hurricane Sandy, P V S C has been working on a resiliency plan to protect the local communities. And the millions of people who depend on sewage treatment and safe drinking water every day. P V S C is also committed to a cleaner environment and has a plan to significantly improve air quality. And transition towards using renewable energy. This roadmap for sustainable energy is in line with New Jersey's Clean Energy Master Plan. The resiliency plan and the roadmap for sustainable energy support each other. We cannot achieve one without the other. Everyone watching tonight knows how Hurricane Sandy impacted the entire community. The impacts to the facility were great. They included a twelve foot storm surge. That inundated the treatment plant, flooding buildings, tunnels and process areas. There was a complete loss of power from the grid for more than two days. The combination of flooding and power outage led to devastating damage to equipment and operations. Causing approximately eight hundred and forty million gallons of raw sewage to be discharged directly into the Passaic River in Newark Bay. Even after the grid went back online, the damage to equipment was so severe and conditions so dangerous. That it took weeks to fully restore power to the wastewater treatment plant. A study conducted by FEMA concluded that the loss of treatment at the P V S C wastewater treatment plant. Resulted in an estimated four point one billion dollars of negative impact to the economy in the region. A repeat of Sandy or if a heavy rain event like Hurricane Ida was also combined with a power outage, the impacts could be equally devastating. These events pose risks for untraded sewage in local waterways, streets and basements. Due to their interdependence, P V S C's wastewater treatment plant, several drinking water treatment facilities were also at risk of having to shut down during Sandy. A non-resilient P V S C puts drinking water facilities in the state at risk. It's worth repeating that P V S C's Newark Bay wastewater treatment plant is the single most important piece of infrastructure. In the state of New Jersey when it comes to protecting public health. Understanding the criticality of the wastewater treatment plant to the environment, the economy and public health, several federal, state and local agencies have been working closely with P V S C since two thousand and twelve. To protect the wastewater treatment plant from future catastrophic events. The core and interdependent components included a flood wall around the facility. Stormwater pumping stations to remove the floodwaters from inside the facility and a standby backup onsite power generation facility. Demonstrating the importance of this plan, the Federal Emergency Management Agency or. Provided funds for ninety percent of the cost of these interdependent improvements. Standby power generation facility project is a critical part of the resiliency plan because it provides. Onsite emergency power to the wastewater treatment processes. You can move to the next slide. Should an event cause future loss of electrical supply, the standby power generation facility needs to support the plant's entire electrical load. The criteria that was established for this facility included. First, because this facility will be used during emergencies, we must anticipate that there could be a loss of power on the grid and substations. This means that the power source for the facility must be on site. Second, the facility must fit within the footprint of the available space and available space for power sources in the area is limited. Third, the wastewater treatment plants contains large motors and supplies. It is exactly when the plant is facing severe weather and flooding that it needs to operate at maximum capacity. The site requires thirty four megawatts. Or the equivalent of powering thirty four thousand homes. Fourth, the facility power source must be weatherproof and one hundred percent reliable. And lastly, the facility needs to be able to provide continuous operation during power outages, however long they may last. To best meet the requirements established, the standby power generation facility was designed with the following components. Three combustion turbine generators, no more than two will operate at a time to produce a total of thirty four megawatts. A third is provided in case one is out of service. There are two black start generators to allow for the combustion turbine generators to start up. And two fire pump engines to provide ample firefighting pressure during power outage. Similar to the combustion turbine generators. Only one black start generator and one fire pump engine would operate at time and the other would be a backup. A frequently asked question has been, how often does P V S C intend to operate the facility? Let me be clear, the standby power generation facility is only for emergencies or in preparation for emergencies. When there is a loss of power, the facility will operate. Other than that, to ensure the facility is ready when needed, the engines require monthly maintenance and testing. Which could take up to eight hours per engine. While there are multiple engines that require routine testing, the testing can be done with engines running concurrently. And will be performed during a single day each month. The maintenance and testing would only occur on days when the air quality is deemed acceptable for the testing to be completed. Also, in preparation for a pending named storm event, P V S C will run the facility forty eight hours ahead of the storm event. The biological treatment processes are complex. And require shutdown startup sequencing to provide the proper level of treatment needed. To go through all these sequences at this large facility could take up to forty eight hours. Also, in addition, P V S C has requested up to twelve hours. Per year to participate in a utility grid program when there is a pending emergency on the grid. It should be noted that if there is a storm event. Or a call from the utility to participate in the demand response program. There would be no need to engage in the maintenance and the testing for that month. In summary, if there is not an emergency situation, the standby power generation facility. Will be run during a single day each month for testing and maintenance. The standby power generation facility will be exclusively used by P V S C and will not export power to the grid. We want to note that P V S C will be required to monitor the runtimes of each engine as required to provide a monthly report to the New Jersey D P. To demonstrate compliance with the permit conditions for these run hours. The collaborative planning for the resiliency plan began in two thousand and twelve, immediately after Hurricane Sandy. By early two thousand and seventeen, P V S C held the first meeting with the New Jersey D P. To begin the process of obtaining a modification to its existing Title Five air permit. The plan for completing the modification application included pre purchasing the combustion turbine generators in two thousand and eighteen. And using the manufacturer's emissions data to form the modeling for the permit. The manufacturer Siemens was authorized to proceed with building the combustion turbine generators in July two thousand and nineteen. With the specific emissions data in hand from Siemens, the modification application was prepared and first submitted in January twenty twenty. P V S C has worked collaboratively with the New Jersey D P on the permit. And made several revisions since the initial submission. Based on the feedback from stakeholders, the permit was modified to eliminate using the generators to meet peak demand and resubmitted in July two thousand and twenty one. New Jersey D P has provided P V S C with a letter of administrative completeness based on this application. P V S C began engaging with the public immediately after Hurricane Sandy as and has continued to do so ever since. Meetings were conducted at P V S C and in the community. In total, twelve public meetings were held by P V S C, with five of those in the past year. The public also had opportunities to provide comment at every monthly P V S C commissioners meeting. In addition, a formal public comment period was conducted by FEMA on the overall resiliency plan in two thousand and fourteen. Throughout this process, the public expressed concerns about the project that were heard by P V S C. Some of these included the proposed facility will have additive air quality impacts. The proposed facility will add to the fossil fuel burden and greenhouse gas emissions. There was a question whether there was sufficient consideration given to renewable fuel sources. There was concern the proposed facility would have a communal burden on the local neighborhoods. And there was concern that the proposed facility will impact rates paid by the communities. I'd like to turn it over now to Cynthia, who will will address some of these concerns and plans P V S C has developed. That will result in an overall net air quality benefit to the community.
Thank you, Joe. My name is Cynthia Hibbard. I am the Senior Air Quality Scientist. For the permit application for the standby power generation facility. One of the community concerns we have heard is for the air quality and potential health impacts for the project. As Joe described, the standby power generation facility would be used for emergencies. And preparation for emergencies only. P V S C would be adding state of the art air pollution control equipment to the turbine generators. Beyond what is required by the regulations. This table shows that as a result, the maximum potential air pollutant emission rates, which are in the right hand column. Would be very low in comparison with emission rates the D P considers significant, which are shown in the center column. The group of volatile organic compounds includes individual hazardous air pollutants. The two that were identified as needing further evaluation after the initial health risk screen. Were formaldehyde and acrylene. A preliminary dispersion modeling analysis and health risk assessment. Were submitted with the July fifth air permit application. They are available for review at D P's enhanced notification website. The predicted maximum lifetime incremental cancer risk would be an order of magnitude below. The one in a million health threshold at the fence line. And two orders of magnitude below the threshold at the ironbound community. The predicted incremental non-cancer risk would also be well below the no effects levels. This modeling is currently undergoing technical review by the D P. We understand that an incremental project only impacts analysis. Does not consider the historical cumulative health effects in an overburdened community. P V S C plans to address this by reducing emissions elsewhere on the site. To more than offset the actual emissions from the project. In summary, P V S C has responded to community concerns about air pollutant emissions from the proposed standby power generation facility by. Voluntarily adding state of the art air pollution control equipment to the proposed turbine generators. Limiting the operation of the facility by eliminating the originally proposed peak load management scenario. Using the standby power generation facility only for emergency. Emergencies and emergency preparation and implementing the energy sustainability roadmap. The energy sustainability roadmap has three components. Reducing emissions through facility upgrades. Reducing emissions, eliminating boilers. Installing solar panels and batteries and transition to cleaner fuels. Okay, next slide. The energy sustainability roadmap includes a plan to add about eight megawatts of solar panels and five megawatts of batteries at the site. This was found to be the greatest amount of renewable power that could be added to the site currently. It is not enough to replace the standby power generation facility. Which is needed to support the P V S C demand of thirty four megawatts for up to two weeks. The proposed solar and battery power would be enough, however, to reduce P V S C utility grid demand. And it could start the standby power generation facility in an emergency. The detailed alternatives analysis confirmed independently. Through P V S C's mini request for proposal process. Found that for batteries, one thousand nine hundred and four battery containers. Each the size of a tractor trailer container would be needed. The largest battery facility in the world, Elon Musk's Tesla Moss Landing Megapack facility in California, which is. Shown on this slide, has only a hundred and twenty of these containers. For solar, covering every surface on P V S C's site would provide about ten point six megawatts of power. Only about thirty one percent of what is needed in a power failure. For wind, the wind speeds at the site are not great enough and it is too close to the Newark International Airport. P V S C recognizes that technology is advancing quickly. And is committed to adding more renewable energy capability. As well as committed to adding alternative fuels for the turbines. As these technologies and cleaner, greener alternative fuels become available. The energy sustainability roadmap includes specific actions to reduce site wide actual emission rates. To below what they are today. And to more than offset the increase from adding the standby power generation facility. These actions include. Adding selective catalytic reduction and oxidation catalysts. To the Zimpro heat treatment boilers, which are the largest boilers of the facility. In addition, P V S C plans to remove the operation and maintenance building boilers. Remove a six hundred kilowatt engine generator, two oxygen production boilers and two grit and screen boilers. The total net benefit to the community after both adding the standby power generation facility. And implementing the upgrades listed on the prior slide. Would include the following reductions in actual emissions over what is emitted today at the site. Carbon monoxide would be emitted at about two tons per year less than it is currently. Carbon monoxide would be emitted at about two tons per year less than it is currently. Nitrogen oxides, there would be an eleven ton per year reduction. Greenhouse gases, there would be a reduction in two thousand tons per year in direct onsite emissions and an additional reduction of seven thousand tons per year in displaced utility emissions from the onsite solar panels and batteries. And now I'll turn the presentation over to PVSC's Executive Director Greg Tremontosi.
Thank you, Cynthia, and good evening, everyone. As Cynthia said, my name is Greg Tremontosi and I serve as PVSC's Executive Director. Thank you for joining us. Superstorm Sandy exposed a vulnerability for us at PVSC, our ratepayers and our communities that we cannot ignore and that we we simply have to address. We see this as essential to addressing not only our mission, but also the governor's commitment to environmental justice. Computer modeling confirms that if we lose power again, as we did during Superstorm Sandy, for a significant period of time and a wet weather event occurs during that period of time, there would be raw sewage backups into residential and commercial structures in Newark, Jersey City and Bayonne with street level raw sewage flooding those three cities. Beyond the displacement of people from their homes and the destruction of their property, there will be a significant risk of exposure to toxins, contaminants and diseases found in raw sewage. Given our responsibilities to serve, excuse me, the public and public health, PVSC operations must have a reliable power source to prevent damages from future events. The power source needs to be independent from other suppliers and resilient from any threat that could take the power supply down. We understand concerns about emissions from the facility as people who are directly exposed to those emissions on a daily basis, as well as the cumulative current emissions from many sources, we share those concerns. PVSC's Administrative Order two thousand twenty one twenty five compliance statement provides detail regarding the steps we've already taken and the steps we intend to take in the future in response to stakeholder concerns to protect public health and the welfare of our ratepayers and communities and mitigate or avoid impacts that our actions may impose. To summarize, these steps include, one, the inclusion of state of the art air emissions controls that go beyond N J D P air emissions requirements. Two, limiting the standby power generation facility to emergency use and regular maintenance operation only. During a year in which no emergency operation takes place, the power generation facility would be offline for three hundred and fifty five, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty three days, operating during a maximum of twelve calendar days, if not fewer. And this is a very important point that we want to be clear about. PVSC would only operate the standby power generating facility during emergencies and for that amount of maintenance that is absolutely required to ensure that the equipment won't fail during emergency operation. That's it, period. Regardless of anything else you may have heard or read, that's all that our operating permit would allow. Three, along these lines, the withdrawal of an earlier request to run the standby power generation facility for purposes of peak shaving, which results in the elimination of seven hundred hours of estimated runtime of the facility. The conversion of combustion gas turbine generators to the use of green advanced renewable fuels as soon as practicable. Based on our discussions with the manufacturer, we anticipate a phased conversion with full conversion no later than two thousand thirty. Five, the installation of the maximum amount of solar power that is technically feasible for use in, among other other applications, our day to day operations. Six, the installation of modular batteries that could provide a limited amount of backup power as well as for other applications, such as improving power quality to the facility. Seven, these improvements will result in PVSC completing the standby power generation facility as part of a hybrid microgrid to meet FEMA and N J D P resilience requirements while maintaining uninterrupted sustained operations of our wastewater treatment plant during emergency events. And eight, and finally, the identification of opportunities to reduce emissions from existing processes at our treatment plant through facility upgrades. These upgrades will reduce emissions such that they will more than offset emissions from the standby power generation facility. At the same time, all these steps will ensure that PVSC can continue to provide uninterrupted sewer service in the event of a loss of power and they will protect those who live closest to PVSC from the dangers of flooding and exposure to toxins, contaminants and diseases. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Greg, can we go to the slide after next? I just want to remind people about public comment. So we're ready to move to publicly comment. So the, a few things to note, again, people have already kind of found that out. If you're in Zoom, you can go to reactions and you can raise your hand in the reactions, leave it up, and then I need to call on you and keep it up. I'll take it down. I don't want to lose anybody in the queue. If you happen to be on the phone, I only saw maybe one or two numbers. You can actually raise your hand with star nine on your phone. We'll allow you to do that as well. So, you know, please note that as well. Appreciate it. The, okay, the, again, so you can, under reactions, raise your hand in chat, signal B, you want to comment if you can't figure out the the raise hand function, no problem. If you happen to be in a language channel, Spanish or Portuguese, you can make your comment in that language and the translator will translate for you. And there are closed captioning, there are actually links that Cam just put in the, in there. The, in terms of, one thing that was asked at the beginning of the meeting for those who joined late is if people in kind of good faith would let folks who are local, who neighborhoods, individuals who are residents of Butters close by to the facility could comment first, that would be much appreciated by the neighborhood for those most directly impacted in terms of the the choices or the the issues that are moving forward. So before we start, and I see the raised hand, and we're going to start in one minute, I promise, is we, the commission did receive a letter from the senators, Senator in the district and the two assembly women. I was asked by them to read this, so this letter is as short, I'll read it as the first public comment. It was requested by Senator Teresa Ruiz and by Assemblywoman Elena Pinter-Moran and Shanique Spate. And I'll read this and then I will actually turn to the first person in the queue, who I believe is William Healy, and we'll go from there. So this is to dear Chairman and Commissioners from the Senator and to Assemblywomen, as I mentioned. We, the elected representatives of the twenty ninth Legislative District are ready to express our serious and severe concerns to the proposal to build a fourth power plant in the area. As you are well aware, we, the representatives of this district, have been very vocal against plans to expand any industry that negatively affects and exacerbates public health issues in our community. Our neighborhoods already endure multiple sources of air pollution and we believe every effort should be made to find a solution before defaulting to building another power plant in this community. We are aware that Superstorm Sandy created a terrible scenario for public safety and health in our district. While we fully understand the challenges this presented for our communities, we want to implore this body to adopt a well balanced approach in its exploration for solutions. This approach must ensure that these solutions are safe and sound for all residents of Legislative District Twenty Nine and must not allow the burden of these solutions to fall squarely on the shoulders of Newark residents. The proposal to build a power plant is not a new one. As you know, two thousand fourteen was the last time this matter was considered. It has now been over eight years since then and we request that this commission consider new green technology as part of finding a solution. We understand that finding a solution is going to be challenging, but this commission must do everything in its power to explore every single measure to ensure the soundest solution is found. We stand with you as partners and stakeholders in safeguarding a shared prosperity for all of our families. We thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. All right. So I think what we'd like to do, and Cam, if you could kind of help me spotlight people, I think we'd like to move to public comment. A timer, the timer will kind of pop up on the screen. Cam will put that up in kind of the shared screen format. We'll let you say your name and your affiliation if you want to before you start, then we'll start the timer. Again, I'll kind of give you a quick reminder to finish up if you're past your time. I've got William Healy first and then Abby Adams second. So William, go ahead and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Field. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at this important public input session. It really is democracy in action. My name is William Healy. I serve as the Special Advisor to the President of the New Jersey Alliance for Action. I'm representing our President, Mr. Gerald Keenan, this evening. The Alliance was formed in nineteen seventy four. It's a non partisan organization representing thousands of business, labor, government, utility, education, professional and other New Jersey organizations. Our mission is to improve New Jersey's economy through the promotion of environmentally friendly capital construction and infrastructure investment. In this case, we feel the Alliance and the PVSC have mutual goals. Protection of our environment through responsible construction is the most important. I'm here this evening to support PVSC and urge that we move forward on the onsite standby power generation facility. I think the reasons for it have been outlined rather well by the the commission. It's a much needed element in the ongoing resiliency upgrades of the PVSC. I think we all know the environmental harm that was done by Hurricane Sandy more than a decade ago. I will not rehash the statistics that were previously shared. Had we had this facility back then and were had we had it since, the environmental degradation that took place in this region and impacted the entire state of New Jersey would not have happened. An alternate power source would have been available and the region's suffering would have been lessened and many waterways and tributaries in our ocean would not have been harmed. We must not let this happen again. PVSC serves forty eight New Jersey municipalities and one more than one point five million residents. As we know, more New Jerseians are moving to the communities that the PVSC serves. The census of two thousand twenty confirmed that. The Alliance for Action has consistently spoken in support of this facility and we will continue to do so again. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Rightly so, on the commission's own website, it states protecting public health and the environment. This facility is an important action for the PVSC and upholding that responsibility. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Right. Thank you. Just for folks to note, we will spotlight the speaker. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it, William. The, and then we'll unspotlight when they're done. So you don't have to look at the timer as the major thing on your screen. If you go to Zoom, you'll see, if you go to gallery view, which is there's a view up on the top right of your screen, you can do a side by side for the speaker or the gallery. And then what you can do, there's a little kind of icon in the middle and you can make the the big sort of share screen part much smaller and the speaker or the photograph or the video much bigger. And that's a way so you don't have to stare at that timer. It's the biggest thing, just to let you all know. Appreciate that. I think what we'd like to do is hand it over to Abby Adams and turn it over to you. Just a reminder to give deference to local neighborhood folks if we can. Abby, over to you.
Absolutely. My name is Abby Adams. I'm the Associate Government Affairs Director for the Associated Construction Contractors in New Jersey. We represent Union General Building Contractors, Construction Managers, Happy Highway Site Development Utility Contractors in New Jersey. I'm going to be very brief just because we would just want to show our share of support, reiterate the comments that the presenters made at the beginning. And this job would create thousands of well paying jobs for union construction workers in the state. So I'm going to turn it back over. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, but we'll respect your wishes. Have a nice day.
Great. Thank you, Abby. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over next to Keith, and I may mispronounce names. I so apologize. I'm going to turn it over to Keith Vuz or Vos. So Keith, over to you.
Thank you very much. I am commenting on behalf of the New Jersey State Conference of the N double A C P. My organization has numerous members and constituents in Newark, as it does throughout the entire state. The vision of our organization is to ensure a society in which all individuals have equal rights and there is no racial hatred or discrimination. With more than twenty two hundred units across the nation powered by well over two million activists, the N double A C P is the oldest and largest home of grassroots activism for a range of civil rights and social justice issues. From the point of view of our organization, this issue is a preeminent environmental justice question. What do we mean by that? Environmental justice refers to the fact that in a just society, there would be no insurmountable difference in the quality of life enjoyed by people of considerable means and those not enjoying that status. Both kinds of people would experience life in healthy, thriving environments. That situation emphatically does not pertain in Newark compared to other, several other communities in close proximity. On the contrary, Newark has borne the burden for well over a century of pollution from a wide variety of toxic sources. It is time for that to stop. Yes, the PVSC has given assurances this evening that this time will be different. This time, the latest facility will be safe and foolproof and a benefit to all. I'm sorry, but the N double A C P is having none of that. The history of environmental injustice in Newark can be addressed in one way and one way only in regard to this project. And that is to withdraw the project's air permit applications, cancel the contract with Siemens and redesign the project with a close collaboration with Newark's environmental justice leaders that finally prioritizes the health, the voices and the concerns of Newark residents. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Great, Keith. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for the comment. Okay. And again, I know this is a little confusing, but if in order to see the speaker broadly, if you go to kind of the view that have that little icon in the middle, you can move your screen over so the share screen, the timer is much smaller. I just want to make sure we leave that, though, to be fair to everybody. Keith, thank you. I believe we have Lino Santiago next. Lino, over to you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Lino Santiago. I'm the President for the S S County Building and Construction Trade Council. I'm also a business representative for the Operator Engineers Local Eight Twenty Five. I'm here tonight representing twenty two local unions. Our members are also part of the community that this plan is in. We feel that this is a very responsible project for all the reasons mentioned from the from the previous speakers and from the presentation. We support the project and we look forward to working with P S C, with P V C, I'm sorry, PVSC to be, to have a responsible project. Thank you. That's my, my statement.
Great. Thank you, Lino, very much. Ellie Gruber, you are next.
Thank you very much. My name is Ellie Gruber. I'm co-chair of the League of Women Voters of New Jersey Natural Resources Committee. League of Women Voters encourages active and informed participation of citizens in government. We're not an environmental organization. We're a public interest organization. We do oppose the plans for the PVSC standard standby power generating facility in the ironbound section of Newark. I see that you have changed the plan so it doesn't run twenty four hours a day. It only runs, as you say, three hundred and fifty three days. But we're still concerned that the fuel they're using is a result of gas obtained by hydraulic fracturing, which is filthy gas. We support the environmental justice law, which limits the addition of new facilities in neighborhoods already emburdened by industrial pollution. And the ironbound section is one such neighborhood with several power plants already nearby Newark Airport to the south, Port Newark to the east and many converging highways with heavy traffic. Additional PVSC facilities, which are labeled as resilience, must not be built near this neighborhood or anywhere else in our state. There must be a guarantee that no fossil fuels be used for this facility and no additional emissions or pollution will occur. And I see in your statement that you have made such a, such a presentation. We thank Passaic Valley Sewage for using some alternate power to reduce the impact of the PVSC operation. However, we question whether the use of green advanced renewable fuels is truly in advance since they still require burning harbor carbons, hydrocarbons. We're also pleased to see that you've hired the consultants to help evaluate the way to reduce fossil fuel usage in your facilities. We hope to see actual reductions in place. In addition, it's really important to realize that climate change is an existential threat to New Jersey shore, which is precious to most New Jerseians and an important driver of our economy. Climate change is also a threat to our ports and our port cities, again, an essential part of the economy. Thank you very much. We hope that you will complete a complete environmental impact statement of this facility before any decisions are made. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ellie, very much. Appreciate it. I think next we have Nikki Sheets. Nikki.
Hi, thank you. I'm representing New Jersey E J Alliance and Watson Institute at King University. Several people have mentioned cumulative impacts. So let's talk a little bit about that. That is core cumulative impacts. Talks about how you deal with multiple sources of pollution in neighborhoods. That is core cumulative impacts talks about how you deal with multiple sources of pollution in neighborhoods. And unfortunately, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has provided evidence that in New Jersey, there's more pollution in communities of color and low-income commuters communities. And it says specifically that cumulative impacts is a problem in Newark. They said this in the document, and I quote, Newark is an area where the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has recognized there are disproportionate impacts from multiple pollution sources. And not only too much sources in
Sorry, I couldn't talk with you when you first called, but I got my public testimony.
Time back. We need to we'll we'll mute that. Give us one second. Okay, Nikki, I think you have to unmute again, and let's we're go ahead and get started again. So sorry for that.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. So in 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 other words, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has said Newark has too much pollution and it suffers from cumulative impacts. And this plant will contribute more pollution to Newark. If you look at the plant's proposed operating permit in section four, you'll see that not even counting greenhouse gases. It has a potential to admit sixteen point three four tons of non-greenhouse gas air pollutants every year, if I've done my math right. And I'm talking about air pollution like carbon monoxide and nitrogen oxides and particulate matter and sulfur dioxide. This plant takes us in the wrong direction. Newark already has a cumulative impacts problem. We need to reduce the air pollution, not increase the air pollution. Now, sewage plant sewage commission has said, well, we'll offset that. But look, it should be it should be giving Newark those reductions anyway. Anyway, those air pollution reductions are unrelated to the new plant. The real question is, why aren't they making those reductions now in other parts of the facility? If the plant really wants to be a good neighbor, what does it do is make those reductions? Because it can and it should, and it should not build a plant. The commission should sit down, like Keith Voo said, sit down with residents in Newark and come up with a way of improving the resilience of the plant without pouring more air pollution into the air in Newark. That is how the commission should be a good neighbor. If it's unwilling to do that, then at the very least, it should hold off construction of this plant and subject the plant to the new environmental justice law when it becomes fully operational. In in the plant's documents, it says it wants to be a good neighbor. It wants to operate in the spirit of environmental justice. This is how operate in the spirit of environmental justice. Don't build a plant or at least subject it to the new EJ law when it's fully operational. Don't poison the folks in Newark anymore. Sixteen point three four more tons of air pollution is sixteen tons too much. We need to reduce it, not increase it. Thank you.
Great, Nikki. Thank you so much. Maria Lopez, you are next.
Yes, thank you. And thank you so much for having this hearing. You know, I'm so thankful that the EJ law, the spirit of the law is present with us today with allowing the community to have an opportunity to speak. I'm disappointed at PVSC bringing up Sandy. Sandy happened in twenty twelve. We are now in twenty twenty two. It feels tone deaf to continue to dredge up. I understand Sandy was bad. It was bad for the people in this neighborhood. We saw the sewage, you know. We saw the flooding and a lot of people still haven't recovered. But when this plan was presented in twenty in twenty fourteen, we were still afraid. Now, in twenty twenty two, we've been through a pandemic. The world has changed. We're now on the verge, right? We are at the edge of our limits now when it comes to climate change. We have seen that black and brown people will die and have been dying. People in our community have died due to COVID and more people in our communities were infected and died, right, because of COVID. I keep saying death because this is all that it brings up for me, this fourth power plant in a four-square-mile neighborhood. PVSC says that it is looking for an alternative, but a sixty-day RFP was issued. And then on March thirty first, it ended, but PVSC gave a conclusion statement and a compliance statement April first. Mike with PVSC's lawyer told us that they're still reviewing the potential RFPs for alternatives. Yet we're having this, I don't know, charade today of an event that says that you've considered all the possible alternatives and already moved forward despite the fact that you've already bought the turbines. Our community is not stupid and we're fighting for our lives, you know. We're not just fighting here because we care about the environment. There is no separation between the environment and people. And so when we talk about trying to protect the river at the expense of children's lung, at the expense of people's families. My mom has COVID and is on permitted oxygen, right? That's probably it's changed her whole life and it's from living in environmental justice communities. I don't want that to be anybody's future. And so when PVSC, you have a chance here and, you know, I want to bring the unions in here too. Because we can build the future or we can build the past. We can build dinosaur technology that we're going to have to figure out how to transition in eight years. We can waste millions of dollars doing that, or we can spend millions of dollars investing in the future of not just the ironbound, not just Newark, but the state of New Jersey. Let's stop building this toxic trash. And really, let's have an honest conversation. These timelines don't add up. You're going to get a ton of written comment. But let's just be stop being disingenuous with communities. You've had fourteen meetings in the past decade. That just doesn't really quite count there, right? So PVSC, we're asking that you withdraw this permit and you actually find the solution. You clearly have not done that yet.
Maria, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Richard Grant, you're next, and then Anna Isabel Baptista is after that. So Richard, you're up.
Oh, thank you. Before before commenting, I read PVSC's March thirty implied statement to the NJDPE. It says this on page thirty three about the battery energy storage alternative. It talks about a Samsung battery module that fits into a standardized shipping container. Is its dimension, storage capacity, number of units needed for the power demand in each module's footprint in square feet. Then it says approximately fourteen acres of land would be required to arrange these units side by side and end by end. Well, another battery energy storage system provider is Fluence, which can you believe it is a joint venture of the utility and Siemens, the same company that completed the application on the gas turbines that PVSC purchased. Fluence has a product named GridStack. And this long-duration option is small enough to be housed, not in a shipping container, but in a queue. You take the same information to calculate the acreage and the answer is approximately two point six two acres of land would be required to arrange those units side by side and end to end or use more acres and not stock the modules as high. The thing is, PVSC didn't miss just one battery energy storage system provider. It also missed Tesla. Take its mega-packed systems, information to calculate the acreage, and you get approximately eight point four 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 acres of land would be required to make those units side by side and end to end. You can interpret what I'm saying as an indicator that PVSC's analysis of the alternatives to a gas-fired power plant as the primary energy source is less than reliable, not fully based on a review of current and very near future technology. Instead, I interpreted to conclude that there is more room in a hybrid microwave to increase clean technology capacity from the start rather than promise it at some indefinite time in the future. If there is one skill set that PVSC appears to lack, it's the ability to be forward-looking. To begin with, it took Sandy's devastation for the operator of a wastewater treatment plant a few steps from Newark Bay to act to protect against weather-caused damage. PVSC is the operator of the largest single-site user of electricity in New Jersey, and it didn't seriously consider till now lowering its supersized grid energy bill by installing renewables and energy storage. And although the compliance document asserts that sourcing energy from waste streams is a cutting-edge idea, a Biofuels Digest article from October two thousand fifteen says many U.S. wastewater treatment plants are beginning to use anaerobic digestives to produce biogas that can be used to generate electricity and heat. PVSC trusts the manufacturer's assurance that turbine generators can be fully converted to handle green advanced renewable fuels by twenty thirty. But PVSC is unwilling to trust that clean energy technologies are also continually advancing. Among the idea that turbines can be installed and later converted to
Go ahead and wrap up if you can.
It is given serious consideration, but the idea of installing the state-of-the-art clean energy technology and possibly replacing it in the coming years with more advance is giving no weight.
Great. Thank you, Richard, so much. You bet. Thank you. Anna Isabel Baptista, you're up, and then Yasmin, you're after that. So Anna.
Yes, thank you. I'm offering comments on behalf of the New School University of the Tishman Environment and Design Center where we provide technical assistance to EJ groups on the ground. And after reviewing the compliant, the most recent compliance statement from PVSC, it's clear that we agree with EJ advocates on the ground that this should require a full resubmission of the application for full review of any modifications because of the significance of changes that are being requested under this permit modification. And those permit modifications should be subject to the EJ law that's currently under review, not just under the administrative order. And I'll just mention two primary reasons why I believe that it's really important that these permit changes get fully vetted. One is that there's a complete lack of alternative scenario developed for conditions requiring emergency power generation as well as the delivery of those options that has been technically vetted by the public and industry experts. PVSC lists alternative scenarios summarized in the compliance statement based on outdated feasibility studies dating back to twenty twelve plant-wide solar feasibility studies, for example, to list renewable options. It has issued an RFP light that's only been issued in the last seventy five days that has not actually come under any public scrutiny or vetting. They further don't review any of the upgraded conditions that have occurred in the context of power generation in New Jersey. For example, the fact that PSCNG has invested over two point five billion dollars in their Energy Strong program, hardening the grid infrastructure that services the PVSC plant, including the fortifying of power lines and elevating substations around their plant. This massive investments, including the investments that PVSC itself has made for extensive flood protection, calls into question some of the, you know, claims that they're making about the imminent public health threat from a continued two-week power outage at their facility. In fact, I'd like to ask PVSC how many facility-wide power outages? In other words, how many hours of actual power downtime have they experienced since Hurricane Sandy in twenty twelve? They also look at a history of storm events called, and they issue this based on simply the last ten years. Very limited basis for that. And lastly, one of the really important things is the limited risk analysis that has been conducted. They have not even submitted a facility-wide risk assessment, much less anything approximating a cumulative risk assessment, which EPA and DEP have guidance for. So that PVSC could opt to do more comprehensive risk assessments, and they have opted not to do that and only do the minimal risk analysis under this compliance permit. So for all of these reasons, it really calls into question PVSC's spirit of acting in the EJ law. Thank you.
Anna, thank you very much. Yasmin, you're up next, and then Lenny Thomas after that. So Yasmin, over to you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Yasmin Joliveda Lopri. I've been a resident of the Ironbound for most of my life, most of my twenty eight years. I grew up here. I love my city. I'm I consider myself very proud to be a part of this community. I recently finished my bachelor's degree from Rutgers Newark. I'm proud to be from Newark. I love living here. But unfortunately, when I think about my future and starting a family, I'm very hard pressed to feel that it would be a good idea to raise my future kids in Ironbound and have them be exposed to a level of air pollution that is known to be toxic to the human body. And it doesn't take any kind of science or medical degree to know that because any Ironbound resident can feel that when they walk outside and when they breathe the air and the air quality is consistently changing every day. You don't know when you're going to have a good air day. You don't know if you're going to be able to take that walk on a beautiful spring day. I have the privilege to move if I if I feel the need to do that, thanks to the sacrifices of my Brazilian immigrant mother. I know that being a community of working class, largely immigrant people, not everyone has the privilege to pay higher rents and, you know, just uproot their life that way. So I think that it's very important to understand the disparate racial impact that the policy decisions to continue to allow new plants into our community has. And I want to say one more thing. We've heard a lot of numbers tonight. We've heard a lot of data. I know that it's true that there was much destruction caused by Sandy. I understand that there needs to be an alternative to figure out how to not make that happen again. But Newark should not be paying the price for that. The Ironbound should not be paying the price for that. We have already been paying the price for such a very long time. And so to sit here and say that, oh, we are going to do X, Y, and Z to offset this, I think that PVSC, if it really wanted to earn the trust of the community, it would have looked into making these changes before, not just when, you know, you want to push a new plant through. You know, if you really have the best interest of the community at heart, then you should always be looking at ways to downgrade your carbon footprint and to make this make the place where you do business more habitable for the people around it. Because at the end of the day, you know, you can you can quantify, oh, one point four million billion dollars in property damage and economic costs, but I don't see anybody putting a number on the lungs of our children and the lungs of our residents and the lifespans and their opportunity to actually pursue those things that America, that American values say that they're about. So I think that that's something that should outweigh any financial consideration. And realistically, we know that the plant could go somewhere else and could be done differently. So take it back, please, and reconsider. Thank you.
Yasmin, thank you very much. Lenny Thomas is next, and then Nancy Griffith. Lenny.
Yes, I'm Lenny Thomas, a resident of Ironbound. I'm also a representative of Ironbound Superneighborhood Council. I look at this as a matter of asking the wrong question. You're looking for a way to increase the power on site. It's not really necessary at a time when we have a technology to bring electricity, to bring power, to bring oil-producing gas through oceans. It seems that being flood-resistant should not be a big issue. It's not be something where we have to put the power plant there. We should be able to make flood-resistant power lines going into that area. Already, they are not a good neighbor. They pollute the air terribly. I have a hard time breathing when I'm going through in a lot of days. And a lot of that comes from your plant. This was not considered. Your expert even says they want to keep the air the way it is. It's not acceptable the way it is now. It is not healthy for all of us, for our children, for our families. It's not healthy for us. And you haven't looked at this. You talk about jobs. The jobs are all going to people who don't even live here. And a lot of us, if you keep up the way you're going, will not be here. This has been really going on for like ten decades, well, for decades. The issue of getting power into that plant has not been good. You made slight changes, but never looked at the floods until you actually had a cutoff. That was not efficient. And now your plan to have this onsite power plant is not good, is not beneficial for the community. It's not healthy for the rest of us. You need to rethink this. Technology allows you to do it. We can have offshore power plants bringing power in from the ocean. Why can't you make your site flood-resistant with the power coming from outside? It doesn't have to be in our neighborhood. It doesn't have to be as polluting. The cumulative impact has been terrible and will get even worse with all your plans. Because you'll say you're going to do this, but then somebody will say, let's change the standard just a little bit. And next you know, it's worse than it was before, even though we had the technology for decades to do better. We don't consider them because it's not considered important enough to take care of the health, the well-being of people in this neighborhood. You have to look at the technology you have. There are many alternatives that we have. You have to use them to just decide this is easy. We'll do it this way. It doesn't matter because the people don't make as much noise as other people with more money and funds. It's not just, it's not right. It's not fair.
Lenny, thank you so much. I've Nancy Griffith next, and then Elizabeth after Nancy. Nancy.
Sorry, can I ask you to move me down in the list so more members of the
Sorry, can I ask you to move me down in the list so more members of the community can speak first?
Sure, Nancy, just leave your hand upside track. Keep it all gets to some other folks first and come back to you. So Elizabeth, you are next.
Hi, I too would like to allow Newark residents to go before me, please.
Okay, great. So in fact, you know what, actually Nancy, Elizabeth, actually lower your hand and then raise it again, and you'll go to the bottom of the queue, but I don't want to lose you. So go ahead and lower your hand and then re-raise it, and it'll drop you to the bottom of the queue, which is totally fine. Thank you for doing that. I really appreciate the deference to the local community. Lana, you are up next.
Yeah, hi, hello? Can you hear me?
You sound great.
Thank you. My name is Lana McCray. I'm a Newark homeowner. Sorry, I'm a bit sick today. But, and a proud New Jersey born and raised native. So we heard from PVSC that the pollution added to the air would be negligible, but that analysis was not a cumulative public health impact analysis. And to me, any additional pollution added to the neighborhood is too much. There is no minimal pollution when pollution, when the air quality, particularly in the Ironbound neighborhood, is already at levels that are unacceptable and dangerous to our community and to, especially to our children and especially disproportionately impacting our black community, communities of color. So that's unacceptable to me. It's 2022. Let's be a little bit more creative than finding solutions for massive crises like Hurricane Sandy that add. I mean, the gall of PVSC to say, you know, there was this massive crisis that spewed sewage all over this Newark neighborhood, Ironbound, which was, you know, at PVSC's responsibility. And to say to solve that problem, we need to pollute you more, we need to pollute your community more, that's galling and unacceptable to me. It's unacceptable to not do a full analysis of the cumulative impact. The numbers really mean nothing without considering what the full impact is. Not to mention, climate change, of course, is the biggest threat to humanity at this point. It's unacceptable to continue to revert back again and again to sources, energy sources that contribute to that. And I'll defer to everyone else. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. And sorry you're not feeling well.
Thanks.
No fun. Carlos is next, and then Emmanuel. Carlos?
Mute.
Now we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Just say, I am all for anything that's gonna create jobs for the residents of Newark. But most of these plants, they do not create jobs for Newark residents. The other thing is that I am truly offended that they will want to continue to build any kind of effect, any kind of plant that's gonna contribute to air pollution, contribute to the bad health of the residents of Newark. We've been going through this for over fifty years now. And when these plants are built, we're not the major ones, the black residents are not the major ones who are working on these sites. As a young lady has said, and as a young man has said, we're the least ones that work on these sites, and we're the least ones that work in these sites once they're up operating. And most of the times when they come to us, they've already set in motion for these plants to be built. So when we're commenting on these Zoom meetings, it's really for nothing, because they've already made their mind up that they're gonna build these plants. And it is quite troublesome that they will continuously come to Newark, and you have all of these surrounding counties that they could build these in. That's not gonna contribute to air pollution on a level that it is in Newark. Thank you.
Carlos, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think we have Emmanuel next, and then Mary Walsh.
Yes, hello, thank you for the opportunity. In regards to PVSC's repeated comment that this will only be for emergencies, this will only be an emergency power source. You have to ask, with the climate crisis, how much more frequent will these emergencies be? How much more frequently will they be using the definition of emergency? I think too much, it will, it will become, it will become the opportunity where they can declare that it's an emergency, that they can use this polluting plant. It is also an enormous conflict of interest to use, you know, fossil fuel power with the single great, which is of course the industry that is the single greatest contributor to the climate crisis. There's a conflict of interest to say that you care for public health and the health of this community, and to then use fossil fuel power to be then a client of the fossil fuel industry. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you, Manuel. Appreciate it. Mary Walsh is next, and then Elizabeth Sessirio. Mary?
Yes, I'm here. So it seems that Emmanuel said part of what I was gonna say, but I realize it's difficult to look into other options when we're constantly being told about solar power and batteries. And yet, we have geothermal, which is a phenomenal source of energy and which doesn't pollute because it's going underground and pulling up the heat that's already there. So for example, my university Fordham just built a $10 million student center, and the whole thing is heated by geothermal. So, you know, ten years ago, maybe, you know, when this subject first came up, maybe the geothermal wasn't around. But it's certainly advanced as well as other technologies. And I'm sure that PS, PVSC could look into it. And someone earlier mentioned that there is some consultant who is working with you, and I think that would be a terrific thing to look into, geothermal. It's these, it's another term for it is heat pump. So it goes down into the earth and it brings up the heat. So I hope that you do. Thanks.
Thank you so much. So next we have Elizabeth, and then we have Anthony. Elizabeth Sessirio?
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm a physician, specifically an academic hospitalist. I'm speaking on my own behalf. I would like to express my serious concern that any contribution to the air pollution in Newark will have significant deleterious impacts on the people in this over-industrialized and overburdened community. I see effects on EJ communities firsthand, and it's certainly not esoteric. There was a recent study out of Harvard's TH Chan School of Public Health. It was published in Environmental Research that shows one in five premature deaths are attributable to fossil fuel pollution. More than 10 million people die annually from fossil fuel pollution, particularly Particulate Matter 2.5, which is significantly higher than previous research had suggested. And it means that air pollution from burning fossil fuels like coal and diesel was responsible for about one in five deaths worldwide. And of note, the slide on hazardous air pollutants only listed Particulate Matter 10 and not PM 2.5, the latter of which is more significantly associated with disease. New Jersey is one of nine states with the highest number of deaths per capita from fossil fuels. And the Ironbound community in Newark is already home to three other gas plants, the state's largest trash incinerator, ports, shipping routes, and dozens of other polluting sites. And this should send a clear message to policymakers and stakeholders to curtail any further encroachment on environmental protections. As a physician caring for very sick patients, I often see the downstream effects of a toxic environment. People with lung cancer and no history of smoking, recurrent admissions for asthma or emphysema, even uncontrolled diabetes, cognitive impacts, especially on the young. It's been implemented, or it's been associated with dementia in the elderly and, and heart disease, which is a leading cause of death worldwide and certainly in the US. And air pollution has been associated with an increased risk of contracting and dying from diseases such as COVID. There was also a meta-analysis of sixty-eight studies showing significant associations between air pollution and adverse birth outcomes for pregnant women, and it was most pronounced for women living close to power plants and highways. But beyond air pollution directly, there are, as other people had mentioned, existential threats of climate change, and these plants would strengthen the fossil fuel infrastructure. The WHO has declared that the climate change is the greatest threat to global health in the 21st century, and the CDC has predicted severe health risks to all Americans. The clean energy alternatives exist to the proposed fossil fuel-powered plant and must be considered. As a physician and as a mother, I ask that we protect the health and well-being of the most vulnerable and transition away from a fossil fuel infrastructure, because any increased air pollution that is released on the backs of a burdened community is too much. Thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you so much. Anthony Rios, you are next, and Annette Ramirez.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Anthony. I am a West Orange resident. Most of my family lives in Newark. So this affects me directly. We're currently in the midst of a climate crisis. As someone else has already mentioned, the weather is getting more and more extreme every year. And instead of creating another fossil fuel, fuel plant, we need to be tackling the root cause of the problem, not contributing to it. The green alternative solutions that were proposed were given as a false dichotomy. If the green alternatives don't work near the airport, maybe we can propose a solution away from there. We need to be getting the toxins out of Newark. There is not a cumulative analysis said, as other people said. We need to be reducing the chances of cancer, not increasing it within the safe levels. No increased amount of toxins in the air is acceptable. And if you believe otherwise, I wish you'd think about how many magnitudes of increase of toxins are you willing to expose to your own children? I would say I want to reduce the amount of toxins, not increase them. We, I was born here, like I said, raised here. And I don't remember having smoggy days. I know, I know what fog looks like. I know what it looks like to have a foggy field of view between here and the New York City skyline. But now, we have smoggy days where you can tell at the air stick, you can tell that you can't go outside for longer periods of time, and that there's something else in the air. We know that there are other solutions, and presenting that the wind turbines don't work near the city, near the airport, means maybe we can move them somewhere else. If all of New Jersey was affected by, if so many millions of people were affected by this climate catastrophe, we need to be thinking of a solution that works for all of us throughout the entire state and utilizing all the land, all the resources that we have. So that we don't repeat past mistakes, so we don't keep on ending up putting Band-Aids to keep the businesses running and then make sure that the next Sandy is 10 times worse, because that's what we've been experiencing. If you've lived in this area, your life, you know that typically it's not summer, then winter, then you don't put your summer clothes away, and then it's 50 degrees outside the next day. That's not how things have worked here. We used to have four seasons, not four and a half, five, six. It's obvious. We're repeating ourselves over and over and over again. And it's getting harder because of all these fossil fuel plants filling up our lungs with toxins. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, I guess. But we can't be moving forward with this. Thank you.
Anthony, thank you so much. Annette is next, and then it's Iveth.
Hi, hi. My name is Yanet Ramirez. I'm from Queens originally, but I moved to Newark five years ago. I enjoy living here and the people I've come to see as my community. I see here that there is emphasis that this plant will run only on emergencies and once a month for maintenance. And it's all well and precise, but it doesn't take into account the growing climate crisis that undoubtedly will increase storms, hurricanes in our area, the same storms whose impact will increase and grow stronger each year, causing more havoc and damage to the area. In the year 2021 alone, we have seen in the Trisid area, Trisid area, okay? The following storms, the Snowy Northeastern Tropical Storm Elsa in July, the New Jersey tornado outbreak in July, the Tropical Storm Henry in August, the Hurricane Ida in September, and the, and overall Long Island also has plasmal tornadoes. We know the storms are getting stronger, and they're getting more frequent, and affecting the health of everyone around us, especially the voices who repeatedly are ignored. So based on what you said, on the pretty PowerPoint, PVSC said, when the storms increase, it means that you will run the gas plant even more than the regular emergency days you mentioned. So, I'm sorry, who are you fooling? I know you have thought it out, and you think, you know, you're gonna try to do us with that we're only gonna run the plant 12 days a year. Right. So lastly, for the unions who agreed to this power plant in the beginning, we won't have an actual planet to live on, let alone work in, if you agree to this. We have to think beyond the next 20 years. We have to think above, beyond the hundred. We need clean energy now. This is an existential crisis. Any minimal pollution is unacceptable, unacceptable, our lungs are not for profit. Thank you.
Annette, thank you so much. I have Iveth next, or Aveth, and then Jonathan Smith after that.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, you sound good.
Great. I am currently Vice President of the League of Women Voters of New Jersey Board. I'm also President of Latinas United for Political Empowerment. We're a statewide nonprofit organization for Latinas. But I'm here as a born and raised Newark resident, and I actually was a resident, but now I live in Carney, which is right next to Newark. So this power plant will affect me directly. Both of my children suffer from asthma. They're now 16 and 18. They were both born in the Ironbound. And so I know what it's like to have two children with a chronic illness. And I don't think that it's fair to say that because of Hurricane Sandy and climate change, that you will need this power plant. I'm sorry, I'm speaking on my behalf, by the way. I'm not speaking on behalf of the two organizations that I belong to. I'm speaking from personal experience. And it's not fair to say that you're going to solve the problem by creating more pollution. And so I am adamantly opposed to this project, and I feel that PVSC has not exhausted all alternatives to have a safer power, power plants. I'm also speaking on behalf of my family, friends, neighbors, all the residents in Newark and the Ironbound who don't know about these hearings, who don't know that they can speak up, who don't know that these things are happening. And yet, they are suffering from cancer, they're suffering from diabetes, they're suffering from COVID, just like everyone else said, you know, suffering from asthma. And, you know, I feel that it's our duty to put the facts out there, that this is dangerous for the residents of Newark and the surrounding areas. Like I said, I live in Carney, and it's going to affect us as well. So I hope that this hearing, I want to thank you for having these hearings, but I really, really hope that you take these comments into consideration, and that these hearings are not just for show. Again, I want you to consider alternatives that are much safer for the residents. Like many people said, you know, could possibly be built somewhere else. The people of Newark already have so many things stacked against them. We're already suffering from the effects of pollution in this area, so we do not need another gas-powered generator. So I just wanna, again, thank you and adamantly oppose this project as a community leader, as a mother, as a born and raised in Newark all my life. I've studied here, I've worked here, and now I live in Carney. Adam and we oppose it. Please take these comments into consideration.
I would thank you so much. Appreciate it. I've got Akil, and Akil, and then I have Matt after that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Yeah, so I want to say that a couple of things. One, I live in West Orange, work in Newark, and and I am also a candidate running for US Congress in the New Jersey's 10th Congressional District. And I want to say to everyone here that, you know, that this is something that I think is, is that we need to address on a holistic level. I'm actually proposing that we, you know, I know we have injury needs and concerns, but I'm proposing that we develop a green grid, right, so that we have the redundancy maybe that's being talked about, but that we have a completely different way of thinking about what that is. And so that a green grid would provide us with a different set of of options in terms of providing the necessary energy resources, and it, it would provide the redundancy. And there's, there's lots of different modalities, whether it's looking at the whether it's looking at the wind or other, looking at currents, right? So there's a whole technology talking about using the current of the ocean to produce energy. And so then utilizing those kinds of modalities, I think, are put us in a different space in terms of exploiting those things to the, to the extent that they're possible for a green, more green way of producing energy. And, you know, we have to, my son is born in Newark, also suffers from asthma. I think that we've got to look at these issues in ways that, you know, people got to take consideration, people's families and where they, how they're impacted for the long term. And we can't just
Akil, you just muted yourself, so you still have a minute left, so keep going. There you go.
All the way, the places, there is Elizabeth or Rozelle or
Akil, you muted yourself again there. Sorry about that. Not sure what's up.
I'm sorry.
Keep, keep going.
All those places, I don't know what happened there. Sorry about that. That all those places that we've got to look at what's going on in terms of how we are willing to make sure that there's a comprehensive and holistic approach to it. And we can't continue to do piecemeal work because it's, we're talking about families here. And until we begin to address that in a holistic way, I think that we are, we are failing the process of transforming what we do. And I think we have an opportunity because of the extreme things that we've experienced, we have to now seize that, and we have to have the political will and the business will really to come up with alternatives that are not going to negatively impact the families and make sure that we're not increasing pollution at all. You know, we get stuck on increasing pollution. And I think that that's the problem. We don't, we don't, we don't need, we, it's not acceptable for us to talk about increasing it. We've got to come up with another process. And I'd love to talk with people about how we do that if somebody wants to be engaged in that conversation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Matt Smith is next, and then JB. So Matt?
Yes, good evening. My name is Matt Smith. I'm the New Jersey Director for Food and Water Watch, speaking on behalf of our 73,000 members and supporters across the state, many of whom live in Newark. I want to start my comments by quoting a Star Ledger editorial that was published last week, which quotes, "The Ironbound may be the most uninhabitable place in our state in terms of the health impacts, which are manifested by higher infant mortality, a childhood asthma rate that's off the charts, shorter lifespans, and a drastically diminished quality of life." The state's Department of Environmental Protection found this to be the case more than a decade ago, and it hasn't gotten greener. But the Ironbound is also the kind of place that Governor Murphy vowed to stop treating like dumping grounds when he signed a landmark environmental justice law in 2020. Yet 20 months later, his promise is starting to look and smell like political Tartuffe Free. Why would the Star Ledger call this political Tartuffe Free referring to the PVSC power plant? Well, for starters, the renewable alternatives assessment that PVSC conducted for the Environmental Justice Review is critically flawed and riddled with inaccurate information and outright lies. In both their current and previous attempts to evaluate alternatives to the gas plant, PVSC has only ever evaluated alternatives like solar, wind, and energy storage as standalone solutions. Meaning can solar in and of itself solve the resiliency problems that PVSC has? PVSC has never fully evaluated the potential of a hybrid microgrid utilizing multiple clean renewable energy technologies synergistically to provide resilient backup power. PVSC has never fully evaluated non-power generation alternatives, including grid hardening. As Dr. Batista had mentioned, PVSC has not even looked into how PSENG's recent significant investments in grid hardening technology to the power distribution infrastructure that currently serves the PVSC plant has made it more resilient to extreme weather. And nothing demonstrates PVSC's cynical attempts to greenwash their preferred gas plant than the latest RFP for renewable alternatives, where they issued the conclusion saying that alternatives aren't viable in their April 1st letter to DEP for the EJ compliance, just one day after the deadline in which renewable energy companies had to submit their responses. So in less than 24 hours, PVSC allegedly reviewed all the responses and concluded that there were no viable alternatives. Yet on April 18th, PVSC's legal counsel, Mike Witt, stated in response to an open public records request that PVSC hasn't even fully evaluated all the responses to their latest request for proposals for alternatives to the gas plant. How can PVSC conclude there are no viable alternatives when they haven't even evaluated all the responses? PVSC has stated they would try to convert the gas turbines at an unspecified date to burn green advanced fuels such as hydrogen. However, unlike truly un-renewable technologies, hydrogen produces up to seven times the amount of nitrogen oxide pollution as even burning gas. Hydrogen is not the answer for Newark's pollution problems. It is a false solution that PVSC continues to try and greenwash. Furthermore, they provide no details about when the conversion would take place, so DEP must not consider the hydrogen piece in its evaluation of PVSC's EJ compliance statement. PVSC claims they will only run the plant during emergencies, yet they have a broad definition for emergencies. They will allow them to run the plant at their discretion for unlimited hours during their state of an emergency. And they're proposing a massive overbuild of more than double the power generation they need to operate the plant. Governor Murphy must direct PVSC to cancel their contract for the turbines, withdraw the permit application for this polluting plant, and redesign the project in a way that does not add any more pollution to Newark and neighboring communities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt. And again, if people could try to keep on time, and I can always come back to you if we have time at the end, for sure. Matt, thanks for your comment. And next, I'm going to go to, bear with me a second. Next up is JB.
Thank you. I'm going to be showing my background image. I'm representing myself as a lifelong Newark native, child of immigrants. I work in environmental justice, reproductive justice, and something I just want to share anecdotally in these few minutes is working with youth in the Ironbound in the last several weeks around this issue of a fourth impending power plant. The image that I have is the image that seven and eight-year-olds wanted to share at this meeting today. They're very much aware of not having to use language like cumulative impacts, but they're very much aware of the smell. They're very much aware of the amount of industries that are in the community. They are very much aware of how many people they know and love that have asthma. Newark has the highest rate of asthma than anywhere else in New Jersey. And so to propose this fourth power plant is not only insulting, but it is adding to the devastation that is the health impacts that families encounter. Being sick is also expensive. Being sick is also something that gets carried on in a multi-generational way. And so to this, I say, please look at this image. Consider that this PVSC power plant, when we don't consider the alternatives, we are disgracing and looking away from the black and brown children who live in our communities and are facing this every day. It might be easy to be from outside of this community and not consider all of the lives that are impacted by this much burden that has been happening for decades. This is an opportunity for New Jersey and for PVSC to be able to stop the harm that has been caused to this community.
Great. JB, thank you so much. Just a reminder, folks, if you can, we are trying to give priority to local residents first. And then we'll want to get to everybody else that we have time for. So if you aren't local and want to kind of drop your hand and then raise it, you'll kind of fall to the bottom of the list, and we'll make sure we're getting Newark and kind of Ironbound residents first, just in deference to those closest to the plant. So I have Dave Robinson next, I believe.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I am a business owner. I haven't heard many business owners respond to this. I did, I spent majority of my life in the Ironbound. My office is in the Ironbound. I am a New Jersey Registered Architect and a New Jersey Professional Planner. My studio is in Newark, in the Ironbound, and oh, I just think this is a terrible idea. I mean, there were so many qualified people speaking here and the residents. And I think that, you know, the PV has to go back and think about this strongly. You can set the example for not only New Jersey and Essex County and the Passaic Valley, but, you know, the world, you know, you have, the whole world is looking at the location where you sit. So come back to the plate with a better plan and set an example. I want to reserve, you know, my time for other residents that, or other business owners who are customers, to speak their mind as well. But thank you for the opportunity and come back with a better plan. This is a terrible idea.
Thank you, Dave. Patricia Cortado is next, and then Nicole. So Patricia, you're up next. See, Patricia, go ahead and try and speak. You're unmuted, but I don't hear you. Patricia, give it a shot. You might, if, not sure why I don't hear you.
This call have talked about
There you go.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead and start over, because we couldn't hear you for a minute, but now we can. So it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, then, here we go. So compared to other New Jersey communities, the New Jersey Hospital Association deemed Ironbound as the 510 out of 537 out of all the ZIP codes where a lower ranking indicates less vulnerability, meaning that a lot of our residents experience a lot of health conditions due to the cumulative impact that the air pollution and all the other pollutions that are being forced onto us are experiencing. So we have residents who are low income, lack high school diploma, disabled, unemployed, Medicaid recipients, and limited English speakers, meaning collectively, these factors increase the risk of health problems in the community. Intersect that by the side effects of white supremacy, capitalism, and racism, and it doesn't make it easier. Children age six to 11 have higher levels of common chemicals in their bodies than adults. 25% of Newark children are hospitalized at 30 times the rate as children in other areas of the country. Factor in COVID, and we have ourselves a sacrifice zone. We want to know why PVSC hasn't evaluated the full potential of multiple clean renewable energy technologies to provide resilient backup power. The Newark communities and allies have been on these calls. Maria Lopez Nudas had 14 public meetings voicing our concerns and the need to protect us. Y'all should work with Newark EJ leaders, the DEP, and the governor to create a robust process that prioritizes those directly impacted by the project. Having the correctional facility being the closest community being affected, and then the public housing units not even a mile away, the other residential homes nearby that get flooded because of the intersectional harms caused by the cumulative impacts of the industrial facilities around. You may think that you aren't harming us at all, but factor in the impacts that I just said of all the neighboring facilities and add yourself to the equation. And I don't think you can unsee it or deny the injustices subjected to us here. During Earth Month, for the record, given that this year's theme is about investing in our planet, which in return means investing in our communities, I think that PVSC can invest in the Newark community in a positive way without sacrificing any more of us by withdrawing the air permit, cancel the contract of the turbines, and do better. Thank you so much.
Patricia, thank you so much. I have Nicole and then Stephanie. And just a reminder, if we could kind of, Ironbound residents first, we'd be much appreciated. So Nicole, and then Stephanie.
Hello, I missed that message. I am a West Orange resident, so I will let someone else go first.
Great. And Nicole, if you want to just drop your hand and re-raise it, you'll drop the bottom of the list, but we'll still catch you. Thank you so much. Stephanie, and then Nancy. Okay.
I am also, I'm a Bloomsfield resident. I think I missed a memo, so I'm happy to wait as well.
Okay, go ahead and drop your hand, and then you'll drop the bottom of the list, and we can come back to you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the deference to the local community. Jonathan Smith, you're next.
Sorry, I'll also drop my hand and re-raise it. Thank you.
Great. Nancy Zach.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm a resident of the Ironbound in Newark. My husband has, was born here in Newark. My daughter was raised here in Newark. And we had friends who did exactly what's been described. When they were having children, they moved because they were so, so, so afraid of the effects of the toxics on their children. And for 50 years, for a long time, I've been working with other members of our community trying to stop toxic facilities from locating here. And we have succeeded in some cases and not others. But in 1989, we were over at PVSC protesting at that point about things that PVSC was doing. And my husband got arrested for planting flowers. That's my memory of PVSC. We don't need any more, any additional pollution in the air here, obviously. And I think people have spoken so eloquently, and I think the science is there. I know that, you know, we've gone through this before where we studied the proposals for the garbage incinerator. And people said, it's being built too large. And no one listened. And now we've been, for all these years, taking garbage from New York City, from Ohio, all over the country. We had a we had some garbage come in from Ohio without a manifest that said what was in the load. And it was dumped into the incinerator and water was poured on it, and 40, 40 firemen went to the hospital. And, you know, we, we are doing our best to to look at things, to analyze them. If it's too big, it's not going to be good because it'll just become a repository like the garbage incinerator did. So I guess I just want to say it would be wonderful to be able to say that after all these years of doing this, we can actually find something, we can find another way to do it that will not harm our air. We can have clean air and and clean water and green trees. And, you know, I would like to see yes, please look at it again. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much, Nancy. Appreciate it. I have Christian Rodriguez, and then Yasmin Krenshaw. So Christian?
Hi, my name is Christian Rodriguez. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Sorry, I had to walk my dog. I live down the street from the, from PVSC. I often smell your bad odors from your open sewage pits. I also farm down the street from PVSC. I'm a mentor, a youth organizer. And I'm just honestly tired of like smelling all the bad smells in the area and the neighborhood. I feel as though we definitely deserve clean air. The fact that you're basing your analysis on old data, 2012 infrastructure, it's kind of sad because we're now in 2020. Things have changed. P, P, PC, PS, what is it? The electric company, they fixed their infrastructure. You know, and so I think that you need to go back to the drawing board and actually have a real analysis, right? As to what the infrastructure looks like now? And the real reason as to why you need all that wattage, right? Based on the new infrastructure that we have. There isn't any justification as to why you need so much power in the event of a power outage. So I think, you know, we definitely need to go back to the drawing board and figure that out. Also, you know, many people have said it before, you're adding insult to injury by adding something that's going to emit more pollution to our air. You know, the reason why we're having a Sandy and all these Hurricane Ida is because of climate change, right? Climate change is because of fossil fuel. So it's like, you're, it's like a it's an oxymoron to add another power plant to the neighborhood, considering that that's the reason why we're having, you know, why climate change is a situation, is an issue now. So we definitely need you to go back to the drawing board. You know, pull your permit, pull the permit. You know, will you pull your permit? You know, you said you're going to answer all of our questions. So my question is, will you pull your permit? Will you go back and do an actual analysis of the infrastructure, right? Will you actually cancel your, your contract with Siemens, right? Because you don't need it right now if you're actually going to do a proper analysis and actually Because you don't need it right now. If you're actually going to do a proper analysis and actually, you know, look at alter, alternative solutions that's going to, that's going to be cleaner to our environment. You know, I hear the airplane now going through our neighborhood. Is this something that we always have to stop, right? Through our lessons at school, I know there's teachers that are probably listening right now. We, we often have to fight the, the airplanes in our neighborhood, the smells. Now, you know, three power plants, now another possible power plant. I mean, enough is enough. Go back to the drawing board, pull the, pull the permit, pull the air permit, cancel Seaman's contract and actually do, you know, an actual assessment of the infrastructure so that you can come up with viable solutions to for our neighborhood. Because what you're proposing now, it's not working. It's not going to work. It doesn't, you know, it, it's not in line with what New Jersey is trying to do. And we're tired of it. I'm tired of it, you know, being an organizer, being a resident. I grew up here and I know my community deserves better. So thank you so much for giving, you know, the opportunity to speak. I hopefully, hopefully hope that you all are listening and actually taking, you know, what we're saying into consideration. In the future, you know, maybe you wouldn't know who North residents are if you actually sit with us constantly and actually do, you know, meetings where you, you get to know us and actually work with us and do, you know, meetings, you know, come up with solutions that is going to be
Thanks, Patricia.
For all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I've got, I believe Alexandra next and then Cynthia, just reminding local residents first if we can. So Alexandra.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Nunez. I work with youth in Newark and I'm here to voice the concerns of what this new power plant would have on the communities in Newark. We already experienced enough sources of pollution on a daily basis. We do not need another. Now more than ever, our children deserve to have access to clean air so that they can breathe, play and enjoy being children, especially after the impact of COVID-19 these past few years. Instead, our children are being forced to stay inside to make an attempt to avoid too much exposure to these life threatening pollutants. Our children are our future and as it stands, our children are overburdened. Exposures to pollution has been linked to asthma, emphysema, cognitive defects, cognitive decline, and a myriad of other physical and mental health issues. Enough is enough. Please consider the lives that you are impacting with this plan. Thank you so much.
Alexandra, thank you so much. I have Cynthia Mellon and then Erica Castillo. So Cynthia, you're next.
Hi. Can you, can you hear me? Yeah. Hi, my name is Cynthia Maiton. I am a long-term resident of the Ironbound Newark. I am the co-chair of the City of Newark Environmental Commission and the Chair of the Environmental Justice Commission of Latino Action Network of New Jersey, and I serve on the Steering Committee of New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance. As part of the Newark Environmental Commission, part of our role is to advise the mayor on environmental situations and conditions. And we have been speaking with his office about this. He is very aware of the problems with this plant and I, I believe there's going to be a reevaluation of that. I echo what the other residents have said and in terms of this being an overburdened neighborhood and all of Newark being affected when air quality is like it is and when facilities emit the way it is inevitable that this plant will do if it is still as currently planned. I ask, as others have done, that there be an independent analysis of alternatives to building this plant and that it be halted. Thank you.
Cynthia, thank you so much. I've got Erica and then Melissa. Erica.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Erica. I am a doula reproductive health specialist, student midwife and Newark resident. As a birth worker, it's really important for me to point out that we can't talk about reproductive justice without talking about environmental justice. We know that Black Indigenous people of color experience high rates of fibroids, PCOS and other reproductive issues and extremely high infant and maternal mortality rates. That means that pregnant people and babies, pregnant people are dying either within pregnancy or within the first year of postpartum of giving birth and babies are dying either not making it to birth or dying within the first year of life. New Jersey's maternal mortality rate rates are actually amongst the worst in the U.S. With Newark in particular, having one of the highest infant maternal mortality rates in the state. It's easy to think this is solely due to medical related issues such as medical negligence, implicit bias in medical providers, poorly educated, educated medical staff and other aspects of the medical industrial complex. However, we know that this is actually a systemic racism issue that involves many intersectionalities, including environmental racism. In their cities that often are home to primarily low income, Black Indigenous people of color tend to be impacted by the environmental toxins the most. And we can clearly see this is the case in Newark. We experience high levels of pollution from the incinerator, three power plants, the Newark Airport, truck and train traffic and major highways and more. PVSC's plan to add a fourth power plant would only add to the already high levels of toxicity air pollution. New Jersey already has the fourth highest maternal mortality rate in the nation. Black birth givers are seven times more likely to die during or after they give birth with Newark having the highest, one of the highest infant maternal mortality rates in the state. In order to tackle this issue, we need to look at the medical industrial complex, housing and security, food, apartheid, exposing and exposure to high pollution and more. As a reproductive health specialist doula and student midwife, I'm tired of seeing health issues and near death experiences of my clients. It's a systematic racism. Environmental racism being one of the biggest endocrine disruptors affecting our overall health and contributing to our infant maternal mortality rates in Newark. There's much work to be done, but pulling the air permit and adding another power plant in Newark, pulling the, the air permit for adding another power plant in Newark is something we could do to protect our residents to further health damage. And then on a personal note, myself, I'm a Newark resident. My mother and her siblings grew up in Newark as well as my grandmother have lived in Newark for years and we all have asthma and a bunch of other related health issues.
Erica, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have Melissa and then Christian. Melissa.
Hi, good evening and thank you for this opportunity. I, although I don't live in Newark at the moment, I did for many years and it feels great to follow a birth worker because I was a birthing person in Newark and then gave birth in Newark and raised children in Newark who although we're a year out of Newark will always be impacted by the time that they spent there. We will all, you will all be impacted by, you know, the burden of pollution that once it gets into your body, you know, it's very difficult to, to remove. So I appreciate, again, my name is Melissa Miles and I'm the Executive Director of the New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance. I have a colleague that's already spoken on behalf of the alliance. I'll, I'll speak on behalf of myself. You know, as a former Newark resident, as a parent to children that still live in Newark for part of the week. I appreciate that post Sandy PVSC realized that the facility needs to be more resilient, even though it wasn't very proactive of them, you know, better late than never. But no one understands the environmental impact of, the impact of environmental and climate injustice more than people in communities like Newark. So although all of New Jersey was impacted at the time and by the event, people in Newark and in the, in the Ironbound are impacted continuously by the imminent health threat of environmental pollution. And so folks at PVSC say that they understand the cumulative impacts of pollution in Newark, but I don't think that they do. To understand something is to experience it. They know of cumulative impacts. But once you understand something, you feel compelled to do differently. And the fact that they don't yet feel compelled to do differently tells me they don't understand. PVSC really needs to go back to the drawing board with this permit. They need to scrap this one, resubmit. So that will be subject to the environmental justice law. They also need to engage in real dialogue with the community and advocates to come to a just solution that takes all of the alternatives in, into account. Not just natural gas, which we all know is part of the problem and also is a very unreliable source, especially during an emergency. So overall, you know, as you've, you've heard many advocates and Newarkers say, this is totally unacceptable. And PVSC will have to, you know, start again with really looking at what's available and the alternatives. Thank you.
Right, Melissa, thank you. I have Christian next and Sarah. We have about 15 or so. We have about 25 minutes left, so I want to see how we're doing. So let's get as many as we can and I'll check in about eight 25 to see where we're at. So Christian, you're next and then Sarah. Yes.
Hi, I'm not a Newark resident, but I, I don't really want to go all the way to the very back of the line. I guess I could.
Christian, either way, just, just do you kind of either head to the back of the line or go ahead and make your comments now, your, your preference, but go ahead and just choose if you.
All right, I'll go now. I'll go now. So, yeah, I've been, you know, I was reading the latest articles that are kind of featuring this issue and in the Washington Post article, it mentioned how Governor Murphy acted, in other words, paused the plan if two residents complained that PVSC is considering including a gas-fired power plant in its resilience plan. And the article states, the commission has taken steps to, this is quoted from, I don't know where it was quoted from, but it's from the article. The commission has taken steps to comply with the governor since he intervened. But my question is, why did he intervene? What if residents didn't complain? This makes it seem like PVSC really hasn't had Newark, Newark residents' best interests in mind and therefore can't entirely be trusted. It was only once residents complained, but then they were forced to reconsider. Last meeting, last, last time there was one of these, I asked PVSC to tell the contractors who, who've been, who are coming up with proposals to take out a gas-fired power plant from their proposals entirely. And one commissioner said, later said that PVSC didn't want to interrupt the process again, stopping and starting and just let the contracting companies continue with their proposals with the potential, potential for a gas power plant being in there. If PVSC had taken the right approach from the beginning, we wouldn't be asking you to stop and start. That's, I mean, we're not, that's, that's kind of how simple it was. And, you know, I would like these, these questions addressed or answered. Why has PVSC never fully evaluated the full potential of a hybrid microgrid utilizing multiple clean renewable energy technologies synergistically? Why has PVSC not evaluated the potential of harnessing the power of its own treated wastewater outflows as a source of zero emissions electricity? Why has PV, PVSC not adequately evaluated the potential for tidal power? Why has PVSC not fully evaluated the potential for off-site siting of solar and battery storage as part of a hybrid microgrid solution? Why has PVSC not evaluated non-power generation alternatives to the gas plant? PVSC must fully assess all grid hardening, non-power generation alternatives to the gas plant. Why has PVSC not assessed how PSENG's existing and future grid hardening investments have already and will continue to improve the resiliency of its electricity distribution infrastructure to PVSC? Why has PVSC not completed the cumulative impacts analysis required by New Jersey's environmental justice law? Why do the facilities have to be within the footprint of the existing, have to be within, within the existing footprint? And, you know.
Christian, time's up.
Okay, I, I want to say this is not a zero sum game. We don't have to have sewage or air pollution.
Great. Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it. I've got Sarah Betros next and then Rachel Davis.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can agree.
Hi, I'm Sarah Betros. I am not a Newark resident, but I'm just going to talk real quick. I live in Red Bank, New Jersey. I am a social work student at Rutgers in Newark, actually, but off campus. I just want to say, I'm going to quote, "Certain predictions are that until approximately 2050, climate change prominently will impact health by worsening pre-existing problems in people there by acting as a threat multiplier. Asthma, asthma might have more frequent or more severe asthma attacks because of air pollution. Some predict that after 2050, climate change will be to increases in the baseline number of persons with ill health. Sorry, I'm kind of sick too. The increases will be due to exposure to more intense weather and temperature conditions, a greater local number of potentially hazardous hazardous conditions and longer duration of harmful exposures. So residents of low income areas and especially in Newark are going to be at the brunt of it for having lack of protections afforded to persons residing within, within privilege. So this is an example of environmental racism. I'm also, like, I heard people were saying about children being affected, not only just physically, mentally, as well as the elderly in these communities. I would like to also say, this is not just even just a local issue within Newark or in New Jersey. It's just globally. It's around the world. By 2030, it's going to be really big decrease in the climate, especially as we see it through, like, you know, the heat, the cold, the Arctic. But I just want to say that human activities such as from this company is going to draw, drive fundamental biophysical change at rates that are much steeper than have existed in the history of our species. It's also going to change the environmental conditions, alter our exposures to infectious disease and natural hazards such as heat waves, droughts, floods, fires and tropical storms, including nutritional outcomes, infectious disease, non-communal disease, displacement and conflict and mental health outcomes. And I just want to say, you know, not put the permit, you know, make sure this doesn't go in Newark and people who live in Newark have a say and they deserve the right to be heard. And hopefully you will listen to the people who live in Newark and not, you know, go along with this event. And thank you.
Right, Sarah, thank you. Again, and just if we could, Sarah, thank you so much. If we could kind of focus on residents first, that is really much appreciated. And I'm aware of the time. We'll try to keep things moving here. Rachel Davis, you're up next.
If there's a Newark resident that would like to go first, I'll go to the back of the line.
Great. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Jane Calliff. Jane.
Yes, I think I just, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. My name is Jane Calliff and I'm on the Steering Committee of 350 NJ Rockland. 350.org is an international movement that has locals all over the world. And our focus is to fight climate change. We want a clean energy future so our children do not have to live in, among or in ourselves in the middle of climate chaos. And so a lot of people have been talking about the health issues and how people are suffering in Newark and we know, I mean, I live in Bloomfield, which is right next to Newark. Takes me a very short time to get to Newark and our organization really feels, wants to be allies and has been allies in their fight for clean air and against polluting fossil fuel businesses there. And so I'm sure that the PF, PVSC has knows that last Wednesday, 130 doctors, medical providers and professors sent a letter to Governor Murphy asking him to reject your air permit. And I'll just have one couple of sentences of, from their letter for everyone to, to know in case you haven't heard about this. They said, "We urge you, these 130 doctors and medical professionals, we urge you to deny the air permit for the PVSC power plant in favor of a solution that utilizes 100% zero emission renewable energy. Doing so would be consistent with Governor Murphy's environmental justice commitment and climate goals and decrease further harm against the people of the Ironbound community as well as the whole of Newark. And since we know that air blows all over the place, it doesn't just stay in Newark. It's everybody's concern, not just for the people of the Ironbound who are the closest and the most suffering, but for the rest of us who breathe air. And so I would like the PVSC to answer in their responses to our presentations today, these 130 doctors, medical providers and professors, when they gave all their reasons why, which have been explained today by so many of us, why they say that there should be no power plant. So I hope you're going to do that. And I would like to say that the International Energy Agency, which is in, an agency that historically has supported fossil fuels now said in this past year that there should be no new fossil fuel infrastructure in the world to save the planet for future generations. So that's really important. And the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change scientists are getting so militant because they're getting desperate. And the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change scientists are getting so militant because they're getting desperate that nothing much is happening, that they're even committing civil disobedience and getting arrested. So please do your part to help us have cleaner air and a better future for our children and ourselves and future generations. Thank you.
Jane, thank you. Nicole is next, and then Amy. Nicole?
Thank you. I'm Nicole Pui. I recently completed my Master of Environmental Law and Policy from Vermont Law School, and I work in climate change and environmental security. But I live and grew up in West Orange, a neighbor of Newark to the west. And I grew up watching, from a privileged distance, the same burdens be inflicted on Newark time and time again. When I moved away for a time and visited home, I knew I would be home within 20 minutes when the second, the second the smell hit me in the face. And so I adamantly oppose PVSC's permit modification and support the earlier sentiments that PVSC has been a bad neighbor, that the air quality is already unacceptable. PVSC justifies the new plant by saying that those emissions will be balanced by emissions offsets in other facilities. But the purpose of the Clean Air Act is not to maintain existing air quality. Its clear mission is to protect public health and welfare from adverse effects. And maintaining existing poor air quality is incompatible with that goal. Rather, the only actions that are compatible with that goal are those that work to preserve and enhance air quality for Ironbound residents by decreasing total emissions within the Ironbound. And so I echo those calls to review that permit modification and to review alternatives, and to give your time.
Nicole, thank you. Appreciate it. Amy Goldsmith, and then Jonathan Smith. Amy?
Yes, are there any other Newark residents need to speak before me?
There are another number of residents, but if you could maybe be brief, that would be.
As I can. All right, thank you very much. My name is Amy Goldsmith. I'm the New Jersey State Director for Clean Water Action. We're a national organization, but have been doing work, community-based work, and with our environmental justice partners for, since 1982 in New Jersey. We were founded in 1972, and we wrote and passed the first Clean Water Act, hence our name, Clean Water Action. We also worked with our EJ partners in the drafting and passage of the Cumulative Impact Law. The Cumulative Impact Law was passed in 2020, says not one more actual speck, I'm being a little vernacular here, but actual speck of pollution in already over polluted communities, including Newark. The Cumulative Impact Law means no extra burden, none, zero. Our future must be mandatory reductions as the best policy and practice. We know from what other people have said, Newark residents and its children live with asthma twice as high as the state and nation, higher rates of premature death, stroke, cancer, chronic respiratory ailments. All future decisions must protect people, reverse harm, not cause more harm like the PVSC facility. It doesn't make sense to build a fossil fuel plant, a frac gas plant near the sewer plant, what that was wiped out during Sandy. It doesn't make sense. Isn't this fossil fuel plant going to be wiped out too? Seeking approval to build the frac gas plant is also contrary to the Governor Murphy's Executive Order 274, which requires a 50% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2030. This PVSC gas plant would add greenhouse gases, not reduce greenhouse gases. So it's contrary to the governor's policy. This PVSC facility, as I said, runs contrary to Executive Order 274, runs contrary to the Cumulative Impact Law and the regulations that are soon to come. Clean Water Action joins the community's call for future mandatory reductions in pollution, not more burdens that PVSC is suggesting should be approved here. PVSC must withdraw its oversized fossil fuel frac gas facility per, permit proposal and develop a green resilient remedy now. Thank you.
I mean, I've got Jonathan Smith and then Jasmine. I just want to say that if you are an Ironbound or local resident, if you just let me know in chat, I might try to get to you first, just because of time. But I'm going to keep going with the hands. But if you let me know in chat you're a local resident, I'll try to get you in the queue. So Jonathan Smith, you're up next.
Sure, thank you. This is Jonathan Smith. I'm an attorney at Earth Justice on behalf of the Ironbound Community Corporation. And thank you for the opportunity to provide comments tonight. So I appreciate that PVSC is now reviewing responses to its request for proposals to power its facility using renewable energy. The Ironbound community already has more gas plants than any other part of New Jersey, and the last thing it needs is another one. Renewable technology has advanced greatly in the decades since PVSC last analyzed the potential for renewables. And the renewables of today could very well replace the gas plant that PVC wants to build in the Ironbound. And I also appreciate that PVSC is looking into installing some solar and battery storage on site and reducing emissions from other equipment at the facility. These are emission reduction measures that PVSC should have taken long ago. And these are emissions that PVSC can and should take, regardless of whether or not it builds the proposed gas plant. PVSC should focus on real solutions like solar and batteries, and not on false solutions like hydrogen or alternate fuels that could even increase emissions. So I appreciate all this, but I'm confused about why we're here, having a hearing today about PVSC's proposal when it's not clear what exactly PVSC's proposal is. How can the public be expected to comment when it seems that PVSC doesn't even know what the proposal is? The compliance statement under Administrative Order 25 that PVSC released early this month promises many different emission reduction measures, but those aren't in PVSC's most recent pending air permit application to DEP. So are we supposed to comment on the lower emission proposal that PVSC promises to the community in the compliance statement? Or are we supposed to comment on the higher emission proposal that PVSC is asking DEP for permission to do? And on top of that, PVSC is now considering renewable alternatives that could significantly alter or entirely remove the need for the gas plant. So we could go through this whole process, commenting on a gas plant proposal, only to find out in a few months that the proposal has been entirely changed because PVSC realizes that renewables, renewables are the better, safer, and more just way to meet its energy needs. So the purpose of this enhanced public process under the administrative order and the New Jersey EJ law is to raise the community's voice, but not to string along the community with vague promises and indefinite proposals. PVSC should withdraw the current permit application, go back, review the recent proposals for renewable alternatives, make necessary emission-reducing changes to its overall proposal, and then submit an amended application that incorporates those changes. And only then should the AO 25, the Administrative Order 25, public hearing process be started. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got Yasmin Crenshaw, and then Ray Nichols. Yasmin?
I'm sorry, before you do that, can you clarify when this hearing is over and what the process is? Because you talked about 8:30 being a hard stop, and there's lots of folks that still want to testify.
David will do. So I want to do it this time. So Greg from the commission, I think we still got 12 folks with their hands up. So could I, I wonder if the commission would be willing to continue at least till nine. We'll do a check-in then. But if could we, I think we're not going to make it by 8:30. So Greg, I wonder if we could continue for a bit.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, great. So David?
I would also note there are a lot of folks that have been deferring, putting up their hands in deference to others. And I would also encourage PVSC to have a much more community input, public process moving forward.
Right, thank you, David. And again, I'll check in again at 8:55 as well. So Yasmin, you're up next, and then Ray.
Thanks so much. Hi, everyone. My name is Jasmin Crenshaw, and I will be brief to defer to community voices. I am an associate attorney at Earth Justice on behalf of the Ironbound Community Corporation. Earth Justice is here tonight to stand with community partners, calling for the withdrawal of PVSC's application to build a new gas-fired power plant. We are here to uplift Newark residents who are severely overburdened with pollution, environmental impacts, and adverse effects on public health and quality of life. Many things are on the line tonight, as many folks have said, and I'll just briefly go over a few points, just reiterate how Earth Justice is standing with the community on this issue. Adding a gas-fired plant in Newark will exacerbate the disproportionate environmental harms that the residents are shouldering and have discussed tonight. Constructing this facility will increase SO2, NOx, CO2, and particulate matter, and we know that those pollutants are linked to several illnesses, including reproductive health harms, developmental delays, respiratory and cardiovascular disease, various cancers, and more. Meaningful consideration of a cleaner, more equitable, and sustainable approach to this project is also on the line. Even though PVSC has mentioned consideration of battery and on-site solar power, the actual implementation of these measures is unclear and needs clarity. We also would invite PVSC to adopt a forward-looking approach that actually considers the long-term impacts of this project. Building a dirty, polluting gas plant today and ignoring clean and sustainable options such as renewable energy sources is simply the wrong choice. This places the community in a unfortunate position based off of the public health impacts that many have outlined here today, and it's just not fair. This path actually would create an unnecessary and harmful burden on the community in addition to the burdens that are already suffered and prolong years of toxic exposure. Also, community engagement is on the line. I think we're all grateful for this opportunity tonight to see the community engage. And any redesigns or future iterations of this project need to center and value those community voices, those environmental justice leaders, many of which were here tonight. And a public comprehensive process that actually invites meaningful and comprehensive engagement and takes action on that engagement is what's needed to make this as equitable as possible. So I'll just close in saying that Earth Justice is here, standing with our partners. If we request withdrawal of the air permit gas-fired plant project, public health impacts must be prioritized. Renewable energy alternatives must be implemented today, not months or years from now, because we do know the technology is available. And most importantly, the community members, environmental justice leaders, their voices must be centered, and we're here today in solidarity with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. I've got Ray next, and then Leah Dornow. So Ray, you're up next.
Yes, I'm here tonight as a former resident of Bloomfield and currently serving as co-chair of the Environmental Justice Task Force in New Jersey. I appreciate this opportunity provided by DEP and PVSC to comment upon
Ray, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Ray, you probably need to speak directly into your mic, because you, when you turn sideways, I can't hear you. So, so that would be good to speak directly into your mic.
Thank you.
Much better.
Technology is always changing, and it's important that we all consider the latest technology. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now. Sound good.
Thank you. So I'm part of a faith-based organization that seeks environmental justice and reduction in racial inequalities. Of our core principles, four are particularly relevant. The respect for the interdependent web of all existence, of which we are one part. The inherent worth and dignity of every person. Justice and equity and compassion in human relations, and the right of conscience and the use of the democratic process. We advocate it for the passage of the environmental justice law and are pleased to see that this hearing is being conducted because of it. All of the residents of Newark have the same inherent worth and dignity as the commissioners of PSVC. They deserve the respect, justice, equity, and compassion that has been effectively denied them for over a century by this independent commission. Including within the past 10 years while they've been considering how to avoid a repeat of a disaster caused by SuperSon, Sandy. We're here tonight to question the need for three massive gas power generators. But there are bigger questions that need to be addressed first. According to the Star Ledger, the description of the effect of SuperSon Sandy was that the PVSC plant was flooded by 200 million gallons of salt water because of its location in Newark at the junction of the Passaic River and Newark Bay. Officials said that at one point, a five-foot wall of water overwhelmed the plant. Buildings were destroyed, pumps flooded, vehicles washed away, automated systems shorted out, and critical equipment was badly damaged. Plant treats 240 million gallons of water on an average day, and the damage caused by the flooding forced the operators to release billions of gallons of raw or partially sewage, treated sewage into the New York, New York Bay over a period of weeks. Well, we also note that because of all the water that Sandy distributed and dumped on the land, Passaic River was flowing at above normal levels, and to some degree, all that sewage was diluted.
Ray, your time is up. Ray, your time is up. I'm sorry to report, but you can send further.
Yes, that you investigate other alternatives, including the use of methane, which is generated in the plant, and that the economic model be examined very closely. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Right, thank you. Appreciate it. I've got Leah Dornow and then Nancy Griffith. So Leah, over to you.
Great, thank you so much. I want to start by saying that although climate change is going to affect all of us, it's not going to affect all of us the same way. And there are things right now, like the things, the way that things are right now at both like the local and national level. Working class, working-class people and people of color are going to be affected the most from these changes. And I've heard, like, somebody say, I think early in the call, say that this was like a responsible project, but this isn't. This is not a responsible project, and nor is it good for everybody in New Jersey. It's actually like not responsible because like there's already three power plants in Newark. The pipes for the water still suck. There's still air pollution. There's sound pollution. There are contaminants all around. And so there's obviously other ways to make improvements to the community that lives here. And this project is not even oriented in that way. And with all this in mind, adding to pollution to, like, just shows just how much, how very little care for the community, like, has been, has been put here in Newark. And currently, like, for the people who lived in Newark for these past 50 years, I heard somebody say that this has been happening for the past 50 years. And to still be hearing the PVSC come up with ideas like this is honestly insulting when people of color are just really just trying to stay afloat. People have already been putting up with these things, and who's going to pay the bills that come down the line? Like, it's definitely not going to be the PVSC. They don't have that in their, in their numbers. Y'all just want to come and mess up the community even more. And on top of that, they're trying to gaslight the community to thinking that they're doing this for everybody. And like, they kind of got to suck it up, but that's not right. How many of the people who are making this decision actually live in the Ironbound? How many of them have children that go to school in the Ironbound? And so we need to, like, have, like, very concrete next steps. And one of the concrete next steps that has to happen is that the PVSC has to have, give the community a timeline, a detailed timeline of who's going to be doing the research? When can we expect the research findings by? And how will the PVSC will make sure that the community is also involved in this decision? Because it's obviously going to affect the residents there the most.
Leah, thank you. Thank you, Leah. Much appreciate it. I have Nancy Griffith, and then Kenneth Johnson. Nancy?
Hi, I'm Nancy Griffith. I'm making this statement on behalf of Unitarian Universalist Faith Action, New Jersey. We're a faith-based group believing in the inherent worth and dignity of every person, justice, equity, and compassion in human relations, and respect for the interdependent web, of which we are a part. This organization has also pledged itself to dismantle racism and other oppressions. In this case, we opposed using fossil fuels in the standby power generating facility proposed by the Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission. The plant will be gas-fired, emitting greenhouse gases and additional toxic gases, and it will encourage the production of fracked gas. The fracking industry has been extremely destructive of our neighboring state, Pennsylvania, and has damaged the health of its people. In addition, this gas-fired power plant will be located in the Ironbound neighborhood of Newark, which contains and is surrounded by three other fossil fuel power plants, New Jersey's largest garbage incinerator, Newark Airport, the Seaport, and heavily trafficked fossil fuel truck, train, and equipment routes. Pollution, noise, and smells from these sources plague the neighborhood. The health of the residents has already been damaged, and I really appreciated Dr. Sirseos' comments on that. About one in four Newark children have asthma, a rate three times higher than the national average, and they are hospitalized at a rate 30 times the national average. This power plant does not conform to New Jersey policies on developing new industry. The Energy Master Plan requires reductions in the use of fossil fuels, but this would increase the use. We see that, according to the compliance statement of March 2022. the PVSC has engaged three outside energy consultants to assist in the study of overall plant operations to identify potential for the creation of onsite green advanced renewable fuel. They will help investigate ways to reduce fossil fuel usage and increase renewable energy. But investigating is a long way from implementing. We need to see specific plans for reducing use of fossil fuels and increasing use of renewables, not just investigations. This planned power plant also violates the spirit of the environmental justice law. The goal of that law is to prevent additional pollution in already overburdened areas. As mentioned above, the Ironbound neighborhood has a plethora of sources of toxic emissions. It is against the spirit of the law to add to that. As Unitarian Universalists, we strongly object to the treatment of the Ironbound residents as expendable. Their health is as important as that of any other New Jerseyan. And you should demonstrate your belief in that by modifying your plan to make use of renewables. Thank you.
Good, Nancy. I've got Kenneth Johnson, then Paula Rogan. So Kenneth? And I do agree, folks can keep it to shorter than three minutes, only to give everyone a chance to speak before nine. I greatly appreciate it. So Ken, over to you.
What I've heard is that the new power plant is basically a fail-safe. In the event of a storm, the other, that the other power plants are overwhelmed, that this power plant would really step in. And the way they, the way they've done, the way they've scheduled its use, it would only be working, say, maybe two weeks a year and maybe one time other than that tested to make sure it was still working. It seems to me that a wind power plant would be the ideal solution to the problem. The, they say that the wind isn't strong enough up here to be used as a power source. But the fact is that this plant was only, would only be designed to run when there was a storm, when the winds were strong. So the fact is that the winds would power this plant at the time when the power was needed. And the fact is that they could test it at a time when this, when there were lesser storms, but strong, what there were strong winds. We've had winds of 50, 60 miles an hour. They could, they could use those, those times to test the plant to make sure that it was still working. So the fact is that it seems to me wind power is just the perfect solution for this, for this particular plant that's only really needed when winds are strong. Am I wrong?
Kenneth, thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. I'm going to go to Paula next and then Madeline. So Paula, you're up next.
Hi, last week, there was a truck count in the Ironbound and the South Ward of Newark. We counted vehicles of all sizes. But let me tell you what else we saw when we were standing at the corner of Lister Street and Joseph, in addition to the vehicles. A power plant was spewing pollution. We saw airplanes from Newark Airport, one after the other, cars and trucks on a highway, a cap from the former herbicide factory. Some of the dioxin from the factory is still spread around the Ironbound and in the Passaic River. It impacted many of the workers from the former plant. And the Agent Orange made from that is still impacting US soldiers and Vietnamese people. We could also hear freight trains that were spewing toxic diesel exhaust. Across the street, there was a heavy-duty lift moving huge tanks. It was spewing toxic diesel exhaust. There was a ShopRite warehouse, warehouse behind us where gigantic trucks were idling in the parking lot and other trucks were coming and going. Across Lister was an enormous intermodal warehouse which stores containers from Port Newark until they're sent elsewhere. More diesel exhaust. But let me tell you, on that very block and around the block, around the corner, there were also homes where people are living. When you PVSC told us at previous hearings that the pollution from a PVSC power plant would be negligible, it shows that you absolutely do not understand the science or that you want to deny the science or that you don't care about life. What healthcare providers told us last week at the press conference, over 130 healthcare providers also said in a letter to Governor Murphy and to PVSC is that it's the combined pollution from all of these sources that makes it so dangerous for pregnant women, for children, for all people. And Adula, Erica Castilla spoke about that tonight, the stillbirth, the miscarriages and so on. And, and, and yet you're still planning a gas power plant. Where I live in Teaneck, there are no power plants, no incinerators, no sewage treatment plants, no fat rendering factories. There are no huge trucks that would dare go through my neighborhood. This is environmental racism. This is wrong. And your proposal PVSC for a power plant in an already overburdened, way overburdened community is evil. I will continue to stand side by side with residents in the Ironbound to stop this proposal. Also, a few questions. What is a storm? What is going to trigger you turning this PVSC plant on? What is the storm you're talking about? Another, you spent 52 million, 52 and a half million on the gas turbines without having this proposal approved. Will you go to Siemens and see if you can gas turbines for some modern-thinking solar or wind, wind devices that will
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comment. I have Madeline next and then Rachel Davis. Madeline?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm not going to say too much tonight. I'll submit my comments in writing. But the rest of my comments in writing, but I'm a former Ironbound resident. I lived in the Ironbound from 1979 to 1985. And I was one of the original founders of the Ironbound Committee Against Toxic Waste. And we used to say that in our neighborhood, we fought against more proposals and won against certain of the more proposals than most communities ever have to face in their entire history as communities. And here we are again doing the same thing. Here, the Ironbound community is doing the same thing. And I just want to, I want to take my hat off. I don't have one on, but I want to take my hat off to the persistence of the people in the Ironbound section of Newark. And I want to say that the government of New Jersey and the county government has consistently ignored the concerns of that community, as so many people have already said. I'm speaking tonight also on behalf of the Green Party of New Jersey. It's, we believe in environmental justice and environmental sustainability. And I want to say that, you know, we're not only, as many have mentioned already, we're not talking only about the burning of the fracked gas in the Ironbound community. We're talking about the transport of the fracked gas. We're talking about the need for additional pipelines. We also and most of those pipelines are built through indigenous areas and people. Another environmental justice nightmare is the building of the pipelines. And Governor Murphy's goal of 20, of 50% renewable, to get New Jersey on 50% renewable energy by 2030, is not nearly ambitious enough. And 2050 to be 100% off of renewables. And this proposal, this, if this goes forward, will set us back even further. Fracking as a, as a way of dealing with providing energy is on its way. There's a lot of momentum against it around the world. I just, I had friends in Colombia who just won a victory against a fracked, a fracked proposal to frac gas in their community. So we're, we need to be on the right side of all this. So many things the environmental justice law should enable us to be so. But Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission, this proposal has got to go and new proposals need to be put in its place. I guess I spoke more than I thought.
Thank you, Madeline. Rachel Davis is next and then David Pringle. Rachel?
Yes, thank you. I'm Rachel Dawn Davis, public policy and justice organizer for Water Spirit, nonprofit Spiritual Ecology Center and Ministry of the Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace. Our advocacy and programming are centered on water and the interconnectedness of all life and creation, expressing social justice from a faith lens. Having lost Water Spirit's headquarters to Sandy along the beautiful shore that inspired the organization's creation 20 years ago, we and our thousands of members throughout the state understand the need to focus on tangible resilience and renewable energy wholeheartedly. As I've shared before, Ida showed us Sandy was merely the beginning and I echo Maria in this emphasis, still tonight being tone deaf. A 40-year young resident talked before PVSC earlier this year, 2022, about being on two inhalers. And yet we have the same lackluster presentation this evening as months ago. We must stop climate change by preventing the perpetuation of emissions that caused the storms in the first place, dirty methane gas. PVSC's lost power problem resulted from a lack of distribution of energy to PVSC's facility, not a lack of power generation. The Ironbound obviously qualifies as overburdened with a high percentage of low-income households, 55%, and majority of people of color, 60%. I'm a mother. Visiting the Ironbound last week as health professionals raised awareness, some out of state, about this proposal and meeting with press present residents, including children. I saw how clearly the residents are being harmed, both physically and mentally, due to ongoing and cumulative environmental injustices across generations. It has to stop. Planes overhead, over homes, trucks on the roads where they shouldn't have been, fat rendering smells, they're tired. Cumulative impacts are costly and measurable in dollars and time and life expectancy, and they are exhausting. Newark's community of human beings is beautiful. PVSC work with community leaders and ensure a public process, warranting trust. Children across the state and the entire country are watching. The impacts of capitalism and climate chaos are felt most deeply daily by Black Indigenous people of color. The Poor People's Campaign, which was the demise of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., just released a Poor People's Pandemic Report on the anniversary of his assassination, Earth Month, 4th of April. The findings are that, not shocking, disproportionately, poor people's lives are being sacrificed and were before the pandemic. 140 million people of low wealth before the pandemic. More people, more children on poverty, in poverty than when Martin Luther King Jr. was alive. Water Spirit is screening the film, The Sacrifice Zone, which centers on the Ironbound tomorrow night at 7:00. We recommend you attend. We will submit comments in writing. Thank you to everybody who's helping to stop this absolute madness.
Rachel, thank you. I have eight folks left. I think I can get you all in by nine, ending with Liz or Elizabeth. So people can keep to three. David Pringle, you're up next.
Thank you. I'm representing in power in New Jersey. Like to include by reference all the previous testifiers, opposition overwhelmingly against. I'd like to note that only three people, only one of which actually lives in the community, came out in support of a plan to continue poisoning iron-bound lungs. I hope this transcript will be shared with the Murphy administration. Especially that PVSC's hired supposedly third-party consultant without consultant consultation or coordination with the community around this hearing needs permission to continue the hearing from PVSC. Very unlike a DEP hearing where everybody gets to be heard until all are heard. I'd like to thank Senator Ruiz, some women, Senator Roman, Senator Roman State. 20, they are spot on. 2022 is not 2012. Things have changed. PVSC hasn't done their work. There are many better alternatives that have yet to be explored. Get back to the drawing board. This proposal still includes demand response, which is inexcusable. It fails to reflect cascading effects. If shit hits the fan, pardon the French, if another Sandy happens, yeah. There's now a PVSC wall. The grid has been improved. If, if, if everything is happening all at once, you're in denial that you can, can solve all problems here with this. You seem to be choosing, I think Christian Newell said it, I want to say it again. It's, it's exist, there's a zero-sum game of to reduce raw sewage, we have to poison iron-bound lungs. That is unacceptable. And if you were really concerned about raw sewage, what has PVSC been doing for years about the regular backups of raw sewage from combined sewer overflows in the Ironbound? You're more concerned about Newark Bay than what's going on in the Ironbound. And the Ironbound is literally taking other people's crap and they have to pay for the cost. That is not acceptable. I'd also like, and I'm going to read this because a couple of folks didn't get to make points they didn't get to make earlier. Didn't get to the point that FEMA Hazard Mitigation Fund grants for critical facilities leaves the size and type of emergency power generation up for a case-by-case assessment. So they have guidance but not requirements. And they actually know that natural gas is risky because of the interruptions natural gas supplies during, during an emergency. If PVSC is allowed to build this, then everyone gets to build a power plant. This is a bad precedent. And doesn't even mention that they didn't lose power in Ida or Irene. You are planning a it's ridiculous what you're planning for PVSC. You need to get your act together. And this has been a poor hearing because you're making everybody rush and that's not right. This is not environmental justice.
Thank you, David. I've got Holly Cox next and then Isabel Molina. Holly?
Hi, my name is Holly Cox. I'm a 23-year resident of New Jersey. I've been speaking at these PVSC meetings for over two years. Over this time, PVSC, you have given us the impression that you are just going through the motions of holding these public comment meetings. You give all of us the chance to speak, but you never directly answer our questions. And you have never meaningfully responded to our repeated concerns. You have failed to take your public comment responsibilities seriously. You have failed to even persuade the overwhelming majority of your commissioners, with the exception of Commissioners Tucci and Laura, to have their cameras on during the meetings, even after residents pointed out several times that this is disrespectful and evidence you are not paying attention and taking us seriously. And by the way, where are the PVSC commissioners today? I don't see them on this call. You have failed to follow Governor Murphy's order that you conduct a serious cumulative impacts assessment of the health and environmental consequences of this project as required by New Jersey's landmark environmental justice law. You have failed to care that you are putting a fourth methane gas power plant in Newark's Ironbound community, which is one of the most polluted communities in the entire country and goes against every one of Governor Murphy's climate and environmental justice commitments. You have failed to care that Newark residents already experience high levels of pollution from numerous sources, including an incinerator, power plants, heavy industry, Newark Airport, truck and train traffic, and a major highway. You have failed to take seriously the health impacts and concerns of those who will be impacted by additional harmful exposures. You have failed to care that children are highly impacted by the environmental conditions in Newark, where 25% of children, more than three times the national rate, are diagnosed with asthma and hospitalized at 30 times the rate as children in other areas of the country. You have failed to care that these air pollutants have been linked to a host of health problems, including respiratory and cardiovascular disease, autism, learning disabilities, cancer, and neurodegenerative disease. Despite our request, you have failed to implement a robust stakeholder process that prioritizes the voices and concerns of Newark environmental justice leaders, residents, elected officials, and neighboring communities directly impacted. You have failed to realize we are in a climate emergency now and gas-fired power plants are a major contributor to the climate crisis and will exacerbate the risk of severe weather events, heat, and flooding in this community. You have failed to fully evaluate the potential of a hybrid microgrid utilizing multiple clean renewable energy technologies. You have failed to evaluate the potential of harnessing the power of your own treated wastewater outflows as a source of zero emissions electricity. You have failed to evaluate the potential for tidal power to produce some portion of the power. You have failed to evaluate the potential for off-site siting of solar and battery storage. You have failed to fully assess all grid hardening non-power generation alternatives. You have failed to realize that burning hydrogen to produce electricity will release up to seven times the amount of nitrogen oxide pollution as burning gas. In summary, you have either failed to realize all the above issues or you have realized them and you just don't care. You don't care that if you proceed with this gas plant, you're responsible for environmental racism and deliberately negatively impacting the health of those in your care. You don't care that you're contributing to the climate crisis and making our planet uninhabitable in the very near future. I ask you to stop your business-as-usual approach of justifying additional pollution as quote negligible. Instead, I appeal to you, to you and ask you to please pull the air permit, cancel the gas turbine contract, and work, really work and problem solve to create a cleaner and more equitable world and legacy that you can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. I've got Isabel and then Doug. Isabel, over to you.
Hi, my name's Isabel Molina. I'm the Environmental Justice Policy Associate at the New Jersey League of Conservation Voters. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. New Jersey LCV stands with the community in opposing a fracked gas power plant and one of the most overburdened and polluted communities in the in one of the most overburdened and polluted communities in the country, the Ironbound. And folks have really laid out a picture of why the Ironbound experiences so much pollution. I mean, in addition to all of those things, we can't discount the thousands of fossil fuel-powered vehicles that run through the area as well every single day. Of course, the commission needs to provide a backup source of power for its wastewater facility to safeguard against sewage discharge if another superstorm were to happen again. However, by powering this backup energy with dirty fracked gas, the intentions to help residents is short-sighted and runs opposed to the clean energy future and environmentally just vision our state is committed to and has set out to achieve. The energy, energy sustainability roadmap claims that air will be cleaner than it is today after the improvements are completed, but improvements won't be completed until twenty fifty, which means almost thirty years of an additional source of air pollution will be contributed to an already overburdened community if this project were to go through. We recommend you stop the proposed project from going forward and instead form a committee that represents local stakeholders to conduct a robust, independent energy analysis with experts knowledgeable in renewable energy alternatives and battery storage. That analysis should include identification of alternative energy sources, sources and battery storage options, transparency of power production, energy demand during surges, and an outline of the costs of various alternatives, including the social costs of greenhouse gas emissions and pollutants that would impact this community. In addition, PVSC should conduct a cumulative impact study, which is soon to be required under the New Jersey Environmental Justice Law and would bring light to the true impacts on the health and safety of residents in the Ironbound community. We believe the steps outlined above will result in a solution that protects the Ironbound community from enduring additional sources of pollution and environmental injustices and keeps New Jersey on track for the clean energy future that the people overwhelmingly want. Thank you.
Isabel, thank you. And I think we have about five more people, so I would like to keep going if we could, just to close those folks out, ending with Elizabeth. And I know we may lose the closed captioner at nine, but I want to kind of just keep going a little bit past if we have to to finish up. So Isabel, thank you. I'll go to Doug O'Malley, and then Stephanie Greenwood.
Thank you so much. This is Doug O'Malley, Director with Environment New Jersey, representing more than eighty thousand citizen members and activists around the state. I want to start off just by recommending a pre-registration link to make it easier for residents to be able to testify right at the top and for non-residents to testify afterwards. I, I think, you know, the, the process to allow the hearing to be extended, but, but honestly, you know, you, you shouldn't not only be kind of people off, there should be more opportunities for people to weigh in. That being said, to quote the famous nineteen sixties movie Cool Hand Luke, I think what we clearly have here is a failure to communicate. And that failure is not upon the people and the public of, of, of this state and the residents of the Ironbound. That failure is clearly on PVSC, because it's not just a failure to communicate, it's also a failure to listen and to understand. And the powerful words we've heard this evening and to reference the comments of Melissa Miles from the New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance, there is a clear failure of understanding of the magnitude of this project and what this project means. And there's also just an intense hypocrisy of this project moving forward at a moment of climate crisis, a moment of crisis for public health, a moment where public health professional, public health professionals are standing up with residents of the Ironbound and saying that this project is a disaster for public health and for the climate. That is a failure to listen, and that's also a failure to listen to the law. And we've heard this again and again tonight, but that does not make it a right. We have a failure of the process from PVSC to look at alternatives. This is a baked process. There are renewable solutions, but not, not according to PVSC. They, they clearly need to look at the solutions that are in front of them and don't dismiss them at a hand. And this is also a failure to look at the intent of the New Jersey Environmental Justice Law. We've heard again and again, you know, this law is about to go on the books. There are clear, this law was passed because of the danger of cumulative impacts. This plant is the poster child of cumulative impacts, and that alone is why it shouldn't move forward. I, I think it's, it's also critical to note, too, the plan is clearly in violation of the State's Global Response Act, is clearly in violation to Executive Order two seventy-four from the governor. And so this failure isn't just on PVSC. This also demands action from the governor and the Murphy administration to step in. And the governor has, has previously done that earlier this year by delaying a vote. And at this point, it's not just delay that's needed. This whole plan needs to be scrapped because PVSC is barreling ahead. They, they, they want, you know, the, 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 the commission wants to build a gas plant. They purchased turbines. That, that is obviously hard to walk back from them. And there is egg on the face of PVSC, but there's more egg on the face for, for admitting a mistake and then apologizing to the public that they have ignored. And that failure is the failure that will that will singe the lungs of the Ironbound for generations. That is not acceptable. So it's time for PVSC to listen to the facts. Please scrap this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. I've got Stephanie Greenwood and then Haley Benson. Stephanie, you're up next.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the extended time, Stephanie Greenwood. I'm speaking as a member of Benay Keshet Dayenu, synagogue-based local chapter of a Jewish Climate Action Network. Benay Keshet is in Montclair. I'm also speaking as someone who lived in the Ironbound for twelve years and moved out in twenty nineteen primarily because of air quality concerns for my daughter who had respiratory issues. So I'm, I'm going to be brief. I know we're late. I'm just echoing the call you've heard already tonight to put a halt to this project and to go back to the drawing board to try to address the issues of resilience and redundancy that are certainly important in ways that don't add pollution to Newark. To say that it can't be done and to just sort of stop pushing on the boundaries of what's considered technically possible really is to say that the health in the neighborhood is expendable. And we know that's not how the conversation goes in, in the wealthier and wider communities of Essex County. And so we need to take another collective look at how we solve this problem of resilience around our wastewater management and extend what we consider possible and also draw a firmer line around what we consider unacceptable. And that includes the protection of the health of the residents and also a firm stand against additional utilization of fossil fuel infrastructure, which we know is, is accelerating huge and disastrous trends here and, and globally. Thank you. I'll submit the rest of my comments and writing.
Stephanie, thank you so much. I have Haley Benson and then Sam DeFalco. So Haley, you're up next.
Hi, thank you so much for letting us speak this evening. I'm Haley Benson from Hudson County, and I oppose this fracked gas power plant. Creating a new gas power plant is a terrible idea for the Ironbound community and the environment and for your business. Gas prices are soaring as it is, and eventually, as the dirty energy is phased out, you will be effectively investing in a dying industry. You will not be able to access the gas you need to power the plant. Don't you want to be leaders? We need fearless leaders who will do the necessary research into alternatives, the industries that will help protect our environment. This gas power plant will only make our local and world climate worse, causing more natural disasters in the long run. I ask PVSC to withdraw their air permit, redesign the projects, and work with Newark EJ leaders to find a better solution to protect their drinking water and invest in a clean future. Thank you so much for your time, and please be on the right side of history.
Haley, thank you so much. Sam DeFalco, and then to close comments for tonight is Elizabeth. So Sam?
Hi, good evening. My name is Sam DeFalco, and I'm an organizer with Food and Water Watch, speaking in opposition to this gas power plant plan. I plan to submit more robust comments in writing, but for tonight, one question I have of the commission that I think does need to be addressed is, you know, the, the commission has said repeatedly that they are committed to environmental justice. So I'm wondering why the commission is insisting on rushing this process ahead before the environmental justice law comes into effect. I think we can expect to see this law, you know, put in place in the next couple of, of months, or at least by the fall. So, you know, it really shows a lot of bad faiths that the commission is moving ahead with this without waiting for that law to come into place. And similarly, you know, the commission has this huge grant that they're using for this project. Some of that money can be used to hire expert, third-party renewable consultants to determine, you know, feasibility of using renewables for this project, because it's very clear at this point that PVSC, you know, has really not done this in a really transparent way. Yeah. So lastly, you know, calling on PVSC to cancel their purchase of the turbines, you know, get back what taxpayer money you can that's, you know, already been spent on these turbines, you know, without prior approval and withdraw your permit application and redesign this project in line with the environmental justice law.
Thank you, Sam. And Elizabeth, you're, you're up next and last for comment tonight.
Hello. Hello. Good evening. My name is Liz Ndoi, and I will cut my comments in half since I am last and late. I would just like to underline what Maria Lopez Nunez said. People in Newark are dying. Children, the elderly, people with compromised lungs are dying in Newark. I have spoken repeatedly to PVSC. I don't want to list the reasons why I am here again tonight, but I would like to say this. I believe that you are moving forward with this gas plant because it is the easy expedient solution for you at this point. But I believe that the technology exists for you to choose clean energy solutions for your future needs. You need to continue to search for all the alternatives that are being developed. The technology exists. You must find the will to implement and use it. So many lives are hanging in the balance with your decision on this plant that today I am pleading for the lives and well-being of the good people of the Ironbound. They deserve the same quality of life as everyone else in the state of New Jersey. If you care, as you say you do, about them, your neighbors and your customers, stop moving forward with this power plant. Do the right thing. Table your plans. Take the time to find the green solution. Save lives and have, as I have asked you before, become the leaders in a new green technology solution for your resiliency needs. Show New Jersey that you have the courage to show the way to bring a brighter, cleaner, healthier future to the people of the Ironbound. Don't dump on them again. Stop this power plant now. Pull the air permit, return or destroy those turbines that you ordered and paid for before you even got permission to build this plant. Do it now. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Liz. And I want to thank everybody for their comments and for staying late and, and being patient with everybody. A lot of people wanted to comment and appreciate the time that they took to do so.
Other, please, if possible. There are more people who need to hear.
Thanks, Liz. Liz, if you could, Liz, stop a minute. If you could share the screen, we just want to put up kind of the way to comment. Greg, I'm going to turn this over to you to close the meeting. And I also want to note that we put in, Cam and I put in chat the different ways you can provide written comment as well. So Greg, back to you to close tonight. And Greg, I don't, don't hear you yet.
Sorry, Pat. It's been, like you said, two years with Zoom, and I'm still messing that up. I apologize, everybody. Thanks, Pat. And just to echo Pat's words, I'd like to thank everybody for, for attending this meeting, for participating. We do appreciate the input we received here tonight and that the earlier input that we received to date. We encourage participation in the process as we move forward. As this slide indicates, the public comment period will remain open through Friday, June third, at four fifteen PM. Until that time, you can submit comments in any way, any one of three ways. We provide the Bitly, the Bitly link there, the email spgfproject@pvsc.com, and the old-fashioned way, you can, you can mail John Rotolo, our chief engineer, with our address provided there. Once all of the comments are received, the PVSC team will meet with, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll coordinate with the NJDEP to provide responses to all comments in writing in a timely manner. And we want to thank you again for your participation. Have a great night.
Great. Thank you all. Be safe, be well. Thank you.